I'm going to order the Select Board meeting of April 30, 2024. We're present. This is a joint meeting, but we're going to start the Select Board meeting first. We have public comment and then we'll have the other boards convene, okay? So we have public comment and it's someone on Zoom, right?
Right.
Joe Matthews. Joe Matthews? There's nobody on. Okay. Okay. Joe, go ahead.
Test. We're good?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, this is my timer going. Joe Matthews, 31 Rosemary Street Precinct I. I emailed the Select Board and this had come up at the Warrant meetings yesterday that the article information text below Article 44 on the warrant contains errors. And it's a little disappointing because through all the presentations, I had been quite clear about the impact in the design of the article and had submitted my own text, which was not used. But the error is that it states that calculating a structured floor area ratio, the FAR, in residential and industrial zoning districts. This bylaw change applies only to SRB parcels, right? It also does apply to single residence age, general residence, and rural residence conservation, but they do not use FAR regulations in that part of the town bylaw. So the practical impact is only for SRB. Industrial zoning districts are not impacted by this. In fact, industrial zoning districts do count basement attic spaces if they're used by humans, right? Designed for human occupancy. This was the whole theme of the original issue. We got so caught up in the impacts, we forgot really the... Are we so focused on the forest? We forgot about the trees. Basements and attics are supposed to count. That was the theme there. So I'll work with the Office of Town Manager and Town Council to kind of get that word out because it's important. And as I note that tonight, we have the Hone meeting and a lot of people may have concerns that this could apply to the new zoning text. It's a trivial exercise for the Planning Board to not use this text, even if it's adopted in the new zoning district. So I just want people to know that. Keep that in mind. And just a little context, because I know one of the points of debate over the Hone work is just how many units are going to get built. But I just want to add that whatever that number ultimately may be, we are losing one to two small and medium housing units every week. And this has been the case for the past decade plus, right? So you have to think that, well, maybe we get 200 or 300. Well, in intervening years, we've lost a significant amount. And it's not clear to me that if we don't take action on stopping the oversized construction, which are replacing small and medium units, that we'll do anything other than tread water here. So I really want to encourage all of the members of the boards to keep an open mind when we discuss Article 44 at town meeting and not just push the study or a knee-jerk reaction to reject citizens' petitions. Yep, come with that. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. Any other public comments in the hall? Okay, hearing done. We're going to move on to the next part of the agenda, which is a joint meeting with the Planning Board, the Finance Committee, and then Housing Needham Advisory Group, who carry the MBTA Communities Act recommendations. We're going to ask all the committees. We'll go around. You just convene your committees. Heidi, you want to convene, Colin?
Convening, Colin, meeting for April 30, 2024.
Adam Vock?
I'm Adam Vock, Chair of the Planning Board, and I find a quorum of our members and call to order the meeting of the Planning Board of April 30.
Did you join, London? You ready?
We do. Small group, these, you know, right now. Carol Faschetti, Chair of the Needham Finance Committee, and I call our meeting to an end.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, as we're going to open this, a few things I wanted to do. Going to start with Chris Eep at the end. Everyone, say your name and how you connect it, just as we go down. So people watching at home know who the players are.
Chris Eep, Town Council.
Emily Otis, Otis Associates.
Lee Newman, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Katie King, Deputy Town Manager.
Eric Albersen, RKG Associates.
Carol Faschetti, Needham Finance Committee.
John Connelly, Finance Committee.
Barry Kaufman, Finance Committee.
Karen Cowton, the Finance Committee, and a member of the Home Committee.
Mary Ann Cooley, Select Board.
Kevin Keane, Select Board.
Heidi Pearl, Select Board, and co-chair of the Home Committee.
Joshua Levy, Select Board and former member of the House.
Kate Cippatrick, Town Manager.
Natasha Spada, Planning Board and co-chair of the Home Committee.
Justin McCullen, Planning Board.
Adam Vock, Planning Board.
All Outford, Planning Board.
Jay McNaught, Member of the Home Advisory Group.
Ron Ruth, Member of the Home Advisory Group.
Michael Ginn, Member of the Home Advisory Group.
Phil Lovett, Member of the Home Advisory Group.
Karis Lustig, Director of Public Works.
Thank you. And I will also add one of my perks. I forgot to say I'm on Hone as well, but I am. So I'm on Hone. And then quickly, everyone who's a volunteer, and I'm pulling the Select Board. If you raise your hand, if you volunteer.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. We're so pleased to have all of the boards here for our final presentation of the MBTA Communities' recommendations from the Home Advisory Group. We're going to talk today about the MBTA Communities Act, just a reminder, kind of of what the basics of the Act are. Talk about homes, charge, and community engagement. We'll go through our recommended zoning proposals, the build-out, and fiscal impact analysis, the next steps, and we'll have some time for questions. All right. So just as a reminder, the MBTA Communities Act was passed in 2021. The law has changed a little bit since its first passage. It requires that each of the 177 designated MBTA communities must have zoning that provides one district of reasonable size for multifamily housing permitted by right. It cannot have age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children. It must have a minimum gross density of 15 dwelling units per acre. A portion of the district must be located within half a mile of the commuter rail station. And we must finish this process and obtain compliance by December 31 of this year. So for Needham, our Needham-specific requirements, we must have at least 50 gross leapers. We have to have a unit capacity of at least 1,784 units. The dwelling units must be 15 units per acre. And we need to have 90% of these units located in the station area. So that's within the half-mile of the station. You've met the Home Advisory Group. I think there is one member missing, Liz Caponia. But everyone on the committee has been quite dedicated and we appreciate their service. The charge was to lead a broad public engagement effort for a Needham community to come up with a vision of MBTA communities that would be implemented in Needham that would work for Needham. We utilized the recommendation of the 2022 housing plan as a starting point. Many of the people in this room actually, among these various boards, were part of that commitment. We evaluated build-outs, projections, and analysis of fiscal school enrollment and infrastructure impacts with the help of our dedicated staff and our consultants. We considered a lot of zoning that we ended up leaving out of our MBTA Communities Plan, but did refer to the Planning Board in an attempt to make a holistic approach to our zoning. We updated our perspective boards throughout the process and we have now recommended draft zoning to all of the boards. And we will be turning this draft zoning over to the state tomorrow. So the timeline to date is really important because it's happened between October 21st and January 23rd. That included the Housing Planning Working Group, the community engagement, and the adoption of the plan. So from March 2022 to August 2023, Hone was created and the consultants were hired, and they will be speaking in a couple of minutes. Hone was launched on September 2023. We had three community meetings. The first one was in November of 2023, which was a listening and interactive meeting. The second meeting happened in January of 2024, and it was also a listening and interactive meeting. There was an update to the boards in February of 2024. And then the next slide shows that community meeting number three occurred on March of 2024. Hone finalizes the proposal today, or in April. It concludes all of the work. So our Hone Committee has now completed its work. And then the Joint Board meeting is today. Moving forward, and Katie will talk more about this, a couple of really important things is that tomorrow, we will be sending the proposed zoning to the state. May through August will be the review of the zoning. And then August and September, the Planning Board will finalize the zoning code. Town meeting votes in October, and then the final state review is in December of 2024. So it's been a very kind of methodical, but very thorough process. And we hope you will see all of the efforts today.
So I'm going to walk you through what the Hone recommended zoning proposals are. So Hone is basically recommending about two levels of plans. One is what we call the base compliance plan. And this was a plan that was designed to respect the existing zoning framework and the dimensional requirements that are present in Needham's current zoning bylaw with the intention of meeting the minimum compliance requirements of the Act. And the second option is what we call the neighborhood plan. And it basically increases the dimensional standards and the number of units that can be built, consistent with the recommendations of the Needham Housing Plan. And it is intended to meet and actually exceed minimum compliance. And so the chart on the table basically shows you what the unit capacity is required for Needham, which is 1,784 units. The base plan gets you just a little bit above that in terms of its build-out of 1,868 units. And the neighborhood plan, according to its design and intent, actually creates more development potential at 3,294 units. So the strategy that Hone is recommending in terms of the zoning framework, in terms of how this zoning should be moved forward in the fall, is designed around four different zoning amendments that build upon each other. And so the first one effectively creates a multifamily overlay district, which meets the dimensional requirements of the base compliance plan. And then the second article amends the zoning map to implement that by placing the land as affected in the appropriate zone. The third article is designed to amend the first article by inserting more robust dimensional standards that are recommended than the neighborhood plan. And then the fourth article, because the boundaries of these two options are not exactly alike, revises the zoning map schematic to meet the requirements of the neighborhood housing plan. So the next map, and I'm going to walk you through the districts in more detail, but just to kind of give you the framework in terms of how the districts are oriented. I think the intent of these articles was to kind of frame that housing course around the MBTA stations, which is required, but also to follow the town's spine of Highland Avenue down through the center, down the Chestnut Street corridor, and to place the housing in the existing commercial districts, which currently either allow the housing by special permit and to introduce them in the districts where they're not currently allowed, and to grab the existing apartment districts that exist still on the corridor where housing is currently allowed. So we're going to grab credit for what we've already zoned for and is actually constructed on the ground. And there, because of some changes in density between the two options, there's some further refinements that we'll go through in the individual graphics. So this just kind of gives you an overall comparison before we get into the details about the differences that are being created in terms of build-out as it relates to the existing situation. I think it's important to understand that this is zoning that's kind of sitting on a framework where you assume that there's nothing on the ground and the zoning is enabling it. So currently on the ground, across these zoning districts, there are 775 housing units. If we were to look at the existing zoning that exists across those districts on the base situation, it's zoned for another 1,019 units. So it's a small delta really between what exists and what the base zoning currently allows. The next step up is some of these districts have overlays, Chestnut Street and Avery Square, which allow greater density under existing zoning. So that's at 1,600, a little over 1,600 units. And then you can see that the base compliance plan, because it's sitting on the foundation of the existing zoning framework, only gets you up to 1,800 units. And then, of course, the neighborhood plan, which is accessing, you know, higher heights and greater FARs, takes you up to the 1,300. So, next slide. Just briefly, just so you can see, just to kind of the overview, what the base compliance components are. Across most of these districts, the height is currently set at two and a half stories. This plan brings it up to three. But it maintains the framework of the floor area ratio and the dwelling units per acre. And it does reduce, I think, the parking requirement across all districts from 1.5 spaces to one and introduces, I think, in the Avery Square overlay, the provision of four stories and a FAR of 1.4 by special permit. So it's basically following the framework of the existing base zoning in Needham. The neighborhood plan is designed to add increased height by moving it from three stories to four stories. It's focused predominantly in the apartment districts, the business district, and a portion of the Avery Square, excuse me, the Chestnut Street Business District located west of Chestnut Street. It's also designed to incent mixed-use development across those districts by allowing a half-story if commercial space is provided on the first floor or if seven and a half percent of the housing is dedicated for workforce housing. So within the business district, you can go up to four and a half stories. In Chestnut West, which we'll see a graphic of, you can go to four and a half stories. And with the other portion of Chestnut Street District, you can go up to three and a half stories, all of which also have the provision for workforce housing. And by workforce housing, I mean housing that's available to folks that are making between 80 and 120% of area median income. So this is basically showing you the four areas that are currently zoned apartment. Three of the first three, which this is Avery School and Hamilton Highlands. The Highlands, which is located, which is in diagram B, which is located by St. Joseph's Church. And Rosemary Ridge are all located within the half-mile radius of the MBTA station. And then we've added one district outside because we're allowed to do that because we're still meeting our 90% within the half-mile radius, and that's Charles Court Apartments. And you can see from the table on there that basically the existing zoning parameters are preserved. And the only thing that's happening there is the parking requirements going down. The Neighborhood Housing Plan actually makes, introduces, changes some of the districts that are included. So it's, it basically adds in the Denmark Lane apartment area. It adds in Honeywell and Highland Avenue apartments, deletes the apartments in the Avery School and Hamilton Highlands. And then in those zoning districts, assigns a higher height and an increased FAR and a greater number of dwelling units per acre. And so the goal here was to take the existing, some of the existing apartment districts and encourage redevelopment inside of them at a greater height and density than what's currently on the ground. The next one is the business district, which is the block that's located where Sudbury Farms is. This is a zoning district that doesn't currently allow for housing. So housing is being introduced as a standalone use. In the base compliance plan, it's following, the intent of the base plan is following the base zoning. In the housing plan, it's introducing the four-story and an increased FAR. And it's also introducing the provision of mixed-use incentive, which is the half-story, as well as the workforce housing provision. The next one is the Avery Square Subdistrict. And I think it's important to point out that this is not capturing all of Avery Square. This is just capturing one particular parcel, which is 100 West Street. And that's where the Carter Building is located. In this case, the base, it's also in the base scenario. It follows the framework for the existing zoning. Existing base zoning has a height of two and a half stories, is going up to three. And it's allowing a special permit to go up to four stories and 1.4 at that location, which is consistent with what the overlay provides. The next is the Chestnut Street Business District. And this, and the base plan is following the framework of the existing zoning profile, which is, so we're looking at three stories. This is, I think, where the greatest density increase is happening under... Next slide, please. So this slide is basically showing you what is the Chestnut Street Business District. And it is the area where I think the most density increase occurs under the Neighborhood Housing Plan. That's where people wanted to focus it because that's really the commercial quarter. But it was recognized that not all of this area functions the same way and has the same constraints. So the area on the west side of Chestnut Street, which is bounded by the MBTA railroad, was felt that it could accommodate a higher height and density. So it has one set of rules, which I'll go through. And the remainder of the district, the east side, which affords residential neighborhoods to the east, and the area in Slide A, which is Garden Street, which has residential houses across the street, as well as what is the Hartley-Greymount property across from the Junction Station, were all felt to warrant less density. So the area to the west, where higher density was to be enabled, it's four stories. The remainder of the district is set at three stories. The FAR is a straight two. And in both cases, mixed use is being encouraged by a half-story bonus, going up to four and a half or three and a half stories, depending on the district, as well as workforce housing. The next one is the Hillside Avenue Business District. It, under the base zoning, follows the framework of the existing zoning. And it's given a little bump in the housing plan, just through an increase in FAR. The next, I think, represents the industrial district. In this district, housing is currently not allowed, but it's being added. Industrial districts in Needham are located along Hillside Avenue from West Street to Rosemary Street. It's located at Crescent Road and Denmark Lane off of Maple Street. And in this case, the framework under the base zoning that's being provided matches the dimensional requirements for that district so that the scale and the size of what's being built is consistent with what's currently zoned for that area, but a new use is being added. The Neighborhood Housing Plan removes one of the industrial districts, which is the one that's at Denmark Lane, which is the apartment complex that's located close to Needham Center, and places it in an apartment district and only provides a bonus at the Hillside Avenue location and at Crescent Road. And it's also a very small bonus. It's just a small increase in FAR at both locations. So there's some density increase from the base plan, but not significant. So the next one, I think, is this comparison. So you can kind of see where the density increases are happening between the base plan and the Neighborhood Housing Plan. So the apartment district is going up from 526 to 877. But most of the increase, if you look at the base plan for the Chestnut Street District, the base plan is giving you 370 units. And the Neighborhood Housing Plan, over the profile of those three districts, is giving you a little over 1,300 units, which is about 300 units above what the overlay districts currently give you. So it's a 300, 350-unit increase over the existing zoning. So the committee had a couple of recommendations, you know, going forward that they wanted to convey to the Planning Board. The first set of recommendations relate to what they'd like the Planning Board to address as it relates to the implementation of the MBTA Communities Act and the zoning scheme. So they were recommending that the Neighborhood Housing Plan consider allowing four stories and an FAR of 1.4 as of right at the property at 100 West, which is the old Carter Building, if the applicant elects to provide seven and a half percent of the units as workforce housing. And the second item they had asked that the Planning Board addressed through its hearing process on the zoning was that under both the base compliance plan and the Neighborhood Housing Plan in the Avery Square Business District, that they consider exempting out the parking from the calculation for floor area ratio. And this would be considered after we received the final comments back from EO HLC on Needham's existing zoning as it relates to structured parking. And then there were some items that came up during the community process that the committee didn't feel were really within their jurisdiction and they wanted to have the Planning Board consider. I think one of the, I think that number one was, we heard a lot about why are we not rezoning at Percy Station? So it was, and the committee had decided not to do that because the rezoning scheme that seemed appropriate didn't meet the parameters for the MBTA Communities Act. So they asked that the Planning Board look at Percy Station and consider rezoning it for multifamily housing, either standalone or as a mixed-use entity. And this is something similar to what the town had done over at the Neighborhood Business District where Pinellas Market is located. Secondly, they asked the Planning Board to review the zoning in the General Residence District, which currently allows two units per 10,000-square-foot lot, and to consider allowing three or four units per 10,000-square-foot lot, whether or not that lot size ought to be reduced to incent development, and also how the town's existing inclusionary zoning provisions might interface with any changes that are made there because they currently only trigger affordable housing for developments that have more than six housing units. Third, they wanted, the zoning scheme does not provide for any housing changes in Needham Center. People were, had expressed an interest in retaining the mixed-use character of the center, and there was concern about introducing standalone housing. But it was felt that that should be reconsidered or certainly examined. And certainly, the provisions of the existing zoning should be reexamined to see if some modifications might be made to better encourage mixed-use development. Fourth, the committee had suggested that the Planning Board look at the zoning on the south side of Great Plain Avenue between Pickering Street and Warren Street to see if that might be appropriately rezoned for multifamily housing. And fifth, to feeding on the recommendations from the STAN Tech report, to look at updating the parking requirements for commercial uses. Sixth, I think, whether it made sense to reduce the lot size from 10,000 square feet in the Chestnut Street Industrial District and the Hillside Avenue District. Seventh, whether, what strategies there might be to incent workforce housing and also to review the town's site plan review process to see how it might be modified to create a more streamlined review process for projects moving forward.
So just a few comments on the level of review that the town will be able to require of MBTA zoning projects under the base zoning option. MBTA zoning allows a town to conduct a site plan review. It does not allow towns to require a special permit of multifamily housing projects. This distinction is important in Needham because our existing zoning bylaw often... because our existing zoning bylaw often requires applicants to seek site plan approval and a special permit from the planning board at the same time, with those two levels of review occurring simultaneously in a single process. And when that happens, the two different types of review effectively tend to become a defective special permit process. So that existing practice won't work in this context. Where here, we're limited to conducting true site plan review and only site plan review. So just a few comments on what that form of review looks like. Site plan approval is a type of review applied to a use that is allowed by rights on a particular property. Because of this, site plan review involves reasonable regulation of the use and never the outright denial or prohibition of the use. In one of the earliest cases on site plan approval, which was Prudential versus Westwood from 1986, the planning board argued that it had discretion to deny a site plan application. And SJC said that it categorically did not. The reason being that the limited nature of the regulation for site plan review and the fact that the concepts of a use allowed by right and the concept of a use that is dependent on the discretion of a local permitting board are mutually exclusive. So when performing site plan review, there is no power of denial. What the planning board can do is impose reasonable conditions on a project. Examples of what those conditions might look like and conditions that have been upheld as reasonable would include modifying the lighting for the project, adding fencing or screening, requiring drainage plans to demonstrate compliance with stormwater regulations, moving around parking spaces, or moving around other structural elements within the site itself. Consistent with those examples, generally, conditions can be used to shape a project, provided they can't go so far as to interfere with or effectively prohibit the allowed use. And I think a good example of that line is Castle Hill Apartments versus the Planning Board of Holyoke, which is an appeals court case from 2006. That case concerned a multifamily housing project in which an applicant proposed 123 units of housing. And when the planning board was performing site plan review, it imposed a series of conditions that had a cumulative effect of knocking the unit count down to 60. The appeals court said, "You can't do that." Even though the conditions were nominally related to architecture and design, the cumulative effect of reducing the unit count interfered with the use of the property that was allowed by right. And what the court said there was that without question, the set of conditions goes beyond conditions modifying lighting, adding fencing, requiring drainage plans that have previously been upheld as reasonable, and issues as to density and issues relating to the use itself were previously resolved in the legislative sense when the city adopted the zoning in the first place that allowed for multifamily housing at the density that had been proposed originally. So that's just a comment on the types of conditions that can typically be imposed during the site plan review and some that might go a little bit beyond what is allowed. Now, given that this is site plan approval and not special permit, I would also add that conditions generally be confined to the site itself and not require substantial off-site improvements or mitigation. But it is true that under site plan review can also be used to note that the applicant will still need to comply with all code, DPW regulations, environmental standards, wetlands protection law, and other applicable sources of regulation. And the town will not be required for these types of projects to make off-site improvements of its own, to make any particular project work.
So in addition to the incredible amount of work that was done by Hohn and the staff on establishing where the districts were and also coming up with the zoning, there were additional analyses that the town had asked the consulting team to do beyond what was just presented. That included the next two components, which we refer to as propensity of change and the fiscal impact analysis. As you saw in Lee's portion of the presentation, the base compliance model has the zoning capacity for a little over 1,800 units. The Neighborhood Housing Plan has the zoning capacity for a little over 3,200 units. As Lee mentioned, the way that we have to model it using the MBTA compliance model is essentially pretending that every parcel within the zoning districts that Lee went over, all the buildings are essentially flattened and we're starting fresh. And we're layering this new zoning on top of parcels that theoretically have nothing on them. And we're building them up to see what the capacity of the zoning is. There are a lot of factors that will go and do go into the decision of a property owner or developer to actually take action on a property. Zoning needs to be there. The price needs to be right. You have to have a willing seller. The market needs to be right. Needs to be a place where people want to build. So there's a lot of different factors that go into that. So I think, from my own opinion, that it's unlikely all 1,800 units will build out or all 3,200 units will build out. So a question was asked as part of this process. Well, if that's our maximum, what might be a more likely number that we could see over a certain period of time? So we went back and we thought about this and how we might go about doing that. And we came up with what we called the propensity for change model, which at its most simplistic form, it looks at the assessed value of the parcels that fall within the zoning districts that have been identified under both of the scenarios. And then what we do is we run a development financial pro forma, essentially, saying, "Okay, if you change the zoning from what it is today to what it could be under each of the scenarios, how much value does that new zoning create? And is it enough value between the value today and the value in the future? Is that value differential enough to maybe either make a property owner sell it to someone to do something different under the new zoning? Or maybe they choose to do it themselves under the new zoning if there's enough value there?" So we ran that development pro forma for every parcel in both of the scenarios to come up with what that value differential is between what the existing assessed value is and what we think the future might be. So this illustration just shows you a hypothetical example where, let's say, under one of the proposed MBTA districts, we had a half-acre parcel that had a one-story commercial building on it today. And the town says the assessed value of that is $300,000. Fast forward, the town changes the zoning. Town meeting changes the zoning. Now, that half-acre parcel could potentially support a three-story multifamily building. So we measure what the value of that would be, and we subtract the two. And we say, "Okay, $450,000 in the future is $150,000 more than $300,000 today. That value differential is $150,000 or 50% higher tomorrow than it is today." If that makes sense. In our model, we said, "We feel like if a given parcel could generate either 50% or more in value based on the zoning change, we said that has a higher likelihood or a higher propensity to change or turn over in the future." We mapped all those parcels that had that 50% of greater value differential. We looked in the MBTA compliance model at what the build-out says it's going to be. And we added those numbers up to come up with what we think the propensity for new units could be under both the base compliance model and the Neighborhood Housing Plan. So here's what those differences look like. You see the zoning district names to the left. As you work your way to the right across the table, the first column there is the base compliance scenario, and that's the propensity. So again, units from the likely build-out. And you can see of the 1,868 units at the full build for the base compliance, we're saying there's a propensity for about 222 units. If we fast forward all the way to the right, to the Neighborhood Housing Plan, the propensity number goes up. It's about 1,099. The full build-out or the full unit capacity under the Neighborhood Housing Plan is 3,294. The reason why the number is, the percentage of the total build is higher in the Neighborhood Housing Plan, it's about 30%, give or take, versus, I think it was maybe around 19%, give or take, in the base compliance, is because the zoning, as Lee mentioned, changes quite a bit between the base compliance and the Neighborhood Housing Plan. You get more FAR, you get more height, which ends up driving more value because you can get more units on that than you could under the base compliance plan. So that's why those numbers are a little bit closer under the Neighborhood Housing Plan. The next analysis that the town asked us to do was a fiscal impact analysis. And for our fiscal impact analysis, we ran this analysis on both the propensity scenarios and the full build scenarios for both the base compliance and the Neighborhood Housing Plan. At its most simplistic, the fiscal impact analysis essentially asks the question, what is going to be the financial impact of some new activity or new development to a community in a given point in time? It essentially calculates the property tax revenue from a given development scenario. And from that property tax revenue, it subtracts municipal costs. So how much would it cost the town to serve one additional, in this case, multifamily housing unit? And then we also subtract from that the school costs. So we ask the same question of the proposed, in this case, hypothetical development scenario. How many schoolchildren might likely be generated by that development scenario? How much would those new pupils cost to the school district and to the town? And we subtract that from the property tax revenue. So at its most simplistic, it's revenue minus municipal and school costs gives you a number. That number is positive. Then the new development scenario would be contributing positively to the fiscal health of the community. If that number is negative, that new development scenario would technically be a drain on the town finances. To come up with that, we have a fiscal impact model that we've been using for decades, of course, refined over time with what we learned. But the model assumptions, just at its most basic, we have the town tax rates and evaluations. That's how we generate the property tax revenue estimates for the new development scenario. We have the development program. In this case, that is the MBTA unit capacity or build-out numbers for those four scenarios. Then we have the cost side. So what we did was worked with the town, went through the town's budget, worked with the finance director to come up with incremental governmental expenditures across just buckets. Of course, within general government, that includes things like the town manager's office, select board costs, the library, parks and rec, council on aging, the assessor's office, the finance office. Under public safety, that's grouped together with all police and fire costs, although in our model, they're broken out into police and fire. But for the presentation, I lumped them together. We look at public works, and then, of course, we look at schools and school department costs separately. The final thing is the student generation rates per unit. So this is the driver of how many new pupils we think might be generated by the unit capacity numbers here for each of the scenarios. There are a couple of different ways we try to get at those numbers on a per-unit basis. Fortunately, the school district had some recent counts from some multifamily developments that were built here in town. We also, at RKG, have a database because we do fiscal impact work all over Massachusetts. So we have a database of student multipliers for the communities that we've worked in. So we do try to compare Needham to similar communities if we have to. And then there's also state rates and reports. They're a little bit older. In this case, it was great because Needham had the localized information that we needed to generate those rates. So if we boil it down, what we do then to calculate the estimated fiscal impact is we take the number of units for each of the four scenarios. We multiply it by the per-unit revenue numbers. So that's really an estimate of assessed value to give us our property tax revenue. We take those number of units and we multiply it by a per-unit municipal cost to get our municipal cost. As I said before, we subtract those two and we get the initial piece of the fiscal impact. But then we have to come back and we have to factor in the schools. So what we have for an average per-unit property tax valuation is about $3,400 a unit. And that's an average across studios and three bedrooms, where three bedrooms are larger, they're going to generate more gross property tax. Studios are smaller, they're going to generate less. So that's an average across those. We subtract the per-unit municipal cost, which we've estimated to be $1,136 a unit. And that gives us our first number of $2,307 per unit. Now, that $2,307 is if there's no children living in that unit. Of course, we know some of these units will have new pupils living in them. So what we do is we then multiply the number of units in each scenario times our student ratios, times our per-child school cost to get our education cost. And that also comes out of the final number. After doing all that work for the base scenario, the propensity model numbers are on the left. The full build model numbers are on the right. You can see of the 222 units under the base propensity model, the net fiscal impact, again, after we take gross revenue minus all the cost and school costs, would be about $280,000 net to the town on an annual basis if all 222 units built out over time. And we project that would generate about 19 total pupils. Under the full build model, of course, that number, the net fiscal impact jumps to about just under 2.5 million, about 151 potential pupils. So we go to the next slide. We just see the propensity scenario for the housing plan. 1,099 units generating about $1.4 million in annual net revenue, 91 pupils. Then we jump to the biggest scenario, 3,294 units under the full build under the housing plan, just under 4.4 million annually, 264 students. Another question that we were asked throughout the process is, if we're talking about 222 units or 1,000 units or 3,200 units, how long might that actually take to build out in the town if Town Meeting chooses to adopt the zoning? It's a great question. One way that we try to answer it with existing information that we have today is we pulled data from CoStar. And they monitor multifamily permitting, construction, and absorption activity in most markets across the country. So they do that for Needham. And we looked at the period between 2014 and 2023 here in Needham. And we looked at the number of multifamily units that were delivered, so those units that were actually permitted and constructed over that time period, and then how long it took them to absorb into the market. So you can see on their net deliveries, for the most part, other than in 2018, there really hasn't been a whole lot of multifamily production that's being tracked in Needham. But in 2018, there was a big chunk that came online, 526 units. Some of that was the Kendrick. But you can see if you look at absorption, starting in 2018, of those 526 units, in year one, 2018, 109 were actually absorbed, meaning were leased up, followed by 246 were leased up, 89 were leased up in 2020, and then 73 were leased up in 2021. So it took about four years for that 526 units, even though they were built, to actually lease up and have people living in them. If we took this that we have, and yes, it is based on past trends, but it's the best information we have in trying to provide at least some frame of reference for how long we think these might take to build out. As we were going through the process and the fiscal impact analysis process mostly, a question came up about what happens, because Needham has a split tax rate. What happens if there's a commercial property today, which is being taxed at the commercial tax rate? And in the future, if the new zoning is adopted, what happens if that then, say, so that one-story commercial hypothetical that I showed before, and it goes to a three-story all-residential, multifamily residential? The tax rate would change. It would go from commercial to residential. So there was a question that was brought up of what might the impact, not only be of the fiscal impact analysis, but the potential changeover of parcels within the district from a commercial tax rate to a residential? So we took a look at that. And with the help of the town's assessing office, we pulled all the parcel data together. They provided us with the current use code, the tax rate at which that property is being taxed, whether it's for residential or commercial, and the actual tax bill that that property is going to pay this year. So we knew exactly how much tax revenue was being produced by all those properties and at what tax rate. So then we could compare it to the future and say, of all those commercial properties that are currently paying commercial property tax rate, what happens if we then apply the town's current residential tax rate to those properties? What's the delta there? So under the base compliance, we again ran that for all four scenarios. Under the base compliance propensity scenario, you can see Under the base compliance propensity scenario, you can see under today's conditions, there are about, and again, this is just to the 222 units and the parcels that those 222 units are on, or would be on in the future if they were to build out. There's 43 commercial and industrial tax properties and 14 residential. Of course, under the base compliance, we're assuming that all of those would become residential. So all those 43 commercial properties, we're assuming they would all flip to residential under this scenario. So the difference there is a quote unquote loss of 43 properties that are currently taxed at the commercial rate. And in the future, all 57 would be taxed at the residential rate. So that would result in just under pure property taxes, not accounting for the costs that the fiscal impact account for, a loss of about $150,000. And again, that's because we're talking about such a, I would say, a small number of units, 222 units, compared to the full build of 1,868 units. The 222 units is not necessarily enough to make up for that change in tax rate. But you can see what happens when we look now at the full build under base compliance, where we go to the 1,868 units. There's about 85 commercial properties, 25 residential today from the tax perspective. We assume that in the future, if all those were to redevelop as residential, we'd have the 110 properties being taxed as residential. That's a difference of 85. But you can see, just in terms of property taxes, we now have enough value in those new residential properties where we could generate about 1.4 million in total property taxes. That would be that net differential. And then when we look at the neighborhood housing plan, again, because we're talking about much bigger numbers in the propensity scenario, we're talking about 1,099 units. That total property tax differential is 1.9 million. And then under the full build neighborhood housing plan, we're talking the 3,200 units. That becomes almost 6.5 million. So it's really under that initial base compliance propensity scenario, where there might be some potential loss in taxes. I think this is the last one. The last analysis that the town asked us to run was one that's required by EO HLC as part of MBTA communities. So it's called the economic feasibility analysis. And the reason it's required is in the MBTA communities guidelines that were set by the state, they are allowing towns to have inclusionary zoning, or if you already have inclusionary zoning, which in this case Needham does, they allow you to apply a maximum of 10% of those future units to be set aside for deed restricted affordable housing at no more than 80% of the area median income. So that's what the guidelines say you can do. If you want to go above the 10% set aside or below the 80% area median income thresholds, the state has told all the communities, you have to do this economic feasibility analysis. It essentially is done to show to the state, to HLC, that your inclusionary zoning or what you might be proposing for inclusionary zoning changes is not going to have a harmful effect on the financial viability of development under the zoning that you're proposing for MBTA compliance. Needham today, without any changes or anything, requires 12 and a half percent at 80% of AMI. So you're okay on the AMI, but you're exceeding the 10% set aside that the state allows. Therefore, that triggers the need to do an EFA. Unless, of course, Needham wanted to go back down to 10%, but I don't think, from what I've heard so far, that that's what we want to do. So we did the EFA. The EFA is essentially a development pro forma model, similar to what we talked about with the propensity for change. And we just test different thresholds. We test different sizes of development. We test different zoning locations. We test different land values to try to figure out, does the 12 and a half percent to 80% of AMI have a negative impact? From our, from our analysis and perspective, it does not. The rents in Needham are really high, which in some cases is not good for affordability. But if you're a developer trying to pay for rising construction and insurance costs, it is a good thing. So it's all a balance. But we found that the 12 and a half percent to 80% will work. We have prepared that EFA report that will be submitted tomorrow, along with all the other information for the state's preliminary review.
We're getting close. I'm going to speak to capital impact assessment. And this was an additional analysis that was part of Hone's original charge. And in terms of methodology, we took the growth projections in terms of housing units, student enrollment and anticipated population growth. And we shared that information back, along with the zoning maps and the parameters, with our in-house expertise and our town department. So primarily with public works, the public schools, finance department, building, police and fire. And the questions we really were discussing was first, what are the capital needs and priorities that the town has based on our existing conditions? And then the second question is, if we look at this zoning, are there any new projects that we think this zoning would prompt? Or are there any changes in scope of those existing capital priorities that would have to be made because of this zoning? I will note, there's a detailed memo in the packet that goes into much more detail, but I'll hit kind of the high level points. And in this analysis, we had the staff team look both at the likely build out and the full build out of both the base and the neighborhood housing plan. Police, fire and EMS, there are no anticipated capital impacts. This is namely because the town has made recent investments in the public safety building and fire station two, and our current apparatus can serve the size of buildings that are being proposed under this zoning. In terms of the schools, I know everyone is always interested in school enrollment. So I will speak a little bit to the methodology that results in the conclusion that you see on the slide. The Needham Public Schools contracts with McKibben to do their annual student enrollment projections. And so we took the McKibben projections and we added on top of those the student enrollment projections that RKG produced. And we took quite a conservative approach. We looked at the neighborhood housing plan only, so the max kind of unit capacity. And we took the McKibben projections in the peak year. So for high school, that peak year is in FY 35. For elementary school, middle, it's in 39. And that's when we get back to kind of peak pre-pandemic enrollment and peak enrollment numbers. So in those peak years, we added the RKG projections. We also don't know what grade level the students are going to enter in. So we took even a more conservative approach and we said, what if every student that RKG is projecting enters in elementary school all in the same year in that peak year? And looking at that total enrollment count, does the school committee's preferred master plan scenario build out enough capacity in our elementary schools to house that student population? And the answer for elementary schools is yes, that it does. We did that same approach for middle school. We assumed all of the RKG added students entered middle school in one year, in the peak year. And the enrollment capacity that would be produced out of the Pollard renovation in the school committee's existing master plan produces enough capacity for that full student count. Lastly, we did it again for the high school population and under the likely scenario for the neighborhood housing plan, if you assume all students enter high school in the peak year, we would exceed the capacity of the high school. If you assume that half of the students produced from this zoning enter high school in that peak year, we would be under high school capacity. If we go on to the next slide, switch gears and talk about Department of Public Works. And I would just frame that in our conversations with all of the DPW team, the analysis really looks at three different things. Site specific plan review that the Department of Public Works already does for any project that goes to the planning board, which would continue under this zoning and continue under the site plan review that's outlined in this overlay. The second is DPW is always looking at system levels review. So what does our water sewer and drainage systems look like townwide? And how does one area interact with another? And then lastly, DPW currently has master plans underway or planned for in the next zero to three years. That really is going to drive the town's capital priorities, at least for the next decade in terms of understanding age and condition of our existing systems. So to jump to the conclusions, we'll start with water and sewer. And the town, we believe we have enough water capacity to support the housing that could result from this zoning. We have three wells at the Charles River well field for local production. We also can access water from the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority. In the worst case scenario, if we needed to be fully supported by MWRA, we can do that, although we have good local capacity as well. DPW does not anticipate that any new capital projects would result from this zoning in terms of expanding water or sewer. We talked at length with the team about more likely impact would be if we were already doing a capital project on replacing old or impure condition pipe for water or sewer, that we would use this zoning to inform the scope of that project and maybe expand the diameter of the pipe. But that really is kind of minor in terms of the overall cost of a capital project. Our biggest challenge with our sewer system right now is repairs needed to the 128 interceptor. That runs along the highway. This project's already underway and town meeting on Monday will have an article before them asking for additional funding to continue that project. This zoning will not change the scope, the timeline or the budget for that project. And lastly, I'd just note, as I mentioned, DPW does have funding requested for water and sewer master plans in FY 26. And at a site level review, I just also want to note that the town has existing infiltration and inflow requirements, where developments have to reduce the amount of stormwater or groundwater that is getting into our sewer system. Reducing II frees up capacity for actual domestic sewer. And it also reduces how much volume we have to send to MWRA to process. So projects that come in under this zoning would have to comply with that requirement. The next slide. We'll transition to stormwater and our drainage system. This is from both a quality of managing the pollutants in stormwater and a quantity perspective, dealing with increased flooding. Stormwater management is going to be a top priority for the town for the foreseeable future. And that's due, that's with existing conditions regardless of the zoning. This is another master plan that really will inform the capital priorities moving forward. Again, Monday night, DPW has a request for town meeting to augment some ARPA funds with an additional appropriation to support a stormwater master plan that will be able to take this proposed zoning into account. And, you know, much of the areas that are being proposed for rezoning are already impervious surface. They are largely built out. We have a lot of parking lots in these areas. And so there's an opportunity, if any of these parcels were to be redeveloped, to have those developments actually be subject to our existing requirements around stormwater bylaw, which requires some amount of water to be kept on site. Stormwater utility fee, which contributes to the town's finances to be able to address our stormwater challenges. And developments, of course, Chris already mentioned, would continue to be subject to wetlands regulations, floodplain requirements and the such. For context, I also wanted to note that the select board has established a stormwater bylaw working group. We don't anticipate the recommendations from that group until after this zoning goes to town meeting in October. But there is, if any updates are made to the stormwater bylaw, then projects that come in under this zoning would have to meet those more stringent requirements. In terms of our roadways, we are already planning for major improvements to two of the main artirials in those zoned areas, mainly Great Plain Ave from Linden Street to Warren Street, and then Highland Avenue between Great Plain and Webster, kind of connecting up to where the state project ended out near Fire Station Two. And so we are early enough in the design for both those projects that we can assume build out of these zonings in the scope for those projects. I do want to note that the two areas that we identified that we currently are not planning for or incorporating into our five year capital plan from a funding perspective is if any major renovations of Chestnut Street would be needed. And I think it's likely that that may become a priority if projects materialize. Likely, we've done a lot of work on feasibility studies for additional segments to the rail trail. But building that out or an alternative roadway network is not in our current five year capital plan. And lastly, related to roadways, as we were doing all of this work, the one area that we felt we really needed additional information and analysis was on the traffic, both understanding the traffic counts of current conditions. And then what would be the potential impact under the likely scenarios for the base and the neighborhood housing plan? And so we're on the finance committee's agenda for tomorrow night to discuss with them reserve on transfer requests and happy to talk through the scope of that to any extent needed. On the next slide, as mentioned earlier, the parking requirements in Hone's recommendation reduces the existing requirement for housing from 1.5 spaces per unit to one space per unit. This is supported by two parking studies that are Needham specific. So the town had hired StanTech to do a parking study at the Center and Heights. And the Metropolitan Area Planning Council had done their own, actually four different phases of a perfect fit parking study. And the baseline of both of those is that the multifamily housing that we have here in Needham today, we have built more parking than is being utilized. And so this supports the reduction to the one space. And it's a minimum, not a maximum. So a developer could choose to build more if they felt like they needed to adequately market the units. Lastly, of note, environmental items. Compliance for the MBT Communities Act is an act of the town in the town's climate action plan. And town meeting last fall adopted the Optin Specialized Energy Code. So those more stringent standards would apply to any housing built under this zoning. With that, we'll transition to next steps. We have two deliverables that we are still working on, that we will utilize the time while the state's reviewing our zoning to keep working on these items. Again, the traffic study and then design guidelines. We had initial consultation with the design review board. And we have existing guidelines for Needham Center and Chestnut Street quarter that we can use as a starting point. But we will continue more detailed discussions so that when we get the results back from the state, we also will have more detailed recommendations for the planning board related to both traffic impacts and design guidelines. And then finally, just to end on the next step slide, the state is taking their full 90 days for review. And so we want to get this off to them so that they can give us feedback by August 1st. This will let us maintain the statutory timelines that the planning board has to follow when they bring an article to town meeting. This timeline allows for two public hearings before the planning board after Labor Day in time for an October 21st town meeting. And ultimately, the state will review the zoning both by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and also the Attorney General's Office. So with that, happy to take questions.
Thank you. We're open up to questions. It's just
I have a few questions. First of all, for RKG, what is the ratio of schoolchildren per unit that you use? You said you used a ratio. Just wondering what it was.
We did, and it varies by the size of the unit. So studios have no, no children. Ones, I had to just look in the report while answering your question. But we do it that way because we
But that makes sense. I'm just wondering what, maybe you can give me a kind of sense for per size, what it is and on average.
I have it right. I just need to find it. So for Studio One market, so we also, we break it down not only by the size, but also whether it's affordable or market rate. Because in our experience, we found the affordable units tend to have a slightly higher student generation rate than the market. So we break it down in that level of specificity. So for Studio One bedroom markets and Studio and one bedroom affordable, we assume no, no student ratio. For two beds, .06 for the market and .5 for the three bedroom market, .6 for the two bedroom affordable and 1.2 for the three bedroom affordable. Both Studio Ones and Twos are based on Needham data. The three beds, we had to blend in some The three beds, we had to blend in some additional information from our database, the state database that we use.
But the three bedrooms could be townhomes, right? Detached townhomes or?
Yep, they could be.
And then that ratio could be higher if it was on that basis?
It could be. Yeah, it could be.
And then my second question is, and maybe Lee, it's for you. So I know that obviously that the town's goal is to keep affordability at 12 and a half percent. But you mentioned that if in your neighborhood plan, the workforce housing was at least seven, seven and a half percent, you could go up additional stories. But by virtue of the fact that our goal is 12 and a half percent, aren't we at workforce house, seven and a half percent workforce housing? Because it's 80% AMI. Is it, is it the same thing or am I missing something?
Workforce housing was designed to capture an income group above the affordable number. So it was designed to capture folks with incomes between 80% and 120%. Where the affordable provision is capturing incomes at the 80% level.
So third question, and maybe I'm sorry, it's more for the consultant. And it's a high level, but on a statewide basis, has anyone, has there been any study on what the net effect if everybody goes to even just a compliance plan in their 177 communities that have to comply with the MBTA's Act? Because it's designed to produce more housing. And to relieve the, you know, expensive housing that we're all finding ourselves. So has there been any analysis to actually look at if everybody kind of over that smoothing time did the compliance plan? Possibly the valuations wouldn't stay where they are. They, you know, decrease. We did a good. I just was wondering if anybody had actually looked at the utilization of all of this housing, additional housing being produced over a 10-year period or 20-year period? And what the impact is, you know, either on a statewide basis or certainly Metro West basis really is what we care about.
Sure, yeah. Not that I know of. I haven't seen anything that's been produced yet that would look at if everything built out. Even under, you're right, even under the current sort of densities that are required and the land areas that are required if everything's built out. I think the assumption is if we built enough units, rents would at least level out a little bit. And maybe vacancy would rise a tad. It's like between 1 and 2% in a lot of communities right now. Healthy vacancy is probably more in the 5% range from, for rental. So, you know, more vacancy and level rents, everything is assessed on an income-based approach for multifamily housing. So that could potentially level some of the assessments, but I'm not sure they would go down per se. But I haven't seen anything specific about it.
Thanks.
Just to, just to follow up Carol's point. Are you aware of any studies that may have been done? What we're seeing here, I guess, is in terms of multifamily production. If I understand correctly, we have 12,000 housing units in the town, roughly 8,000 are single-family homes, roughly 4,000 are are apartments. Under the base compliance plan, give or take, we're adding almost 50% of the capacity. Have you seen any studies in your own research, perhaps even nationally, that would suggest what the impact would be on the rental price if adding 50% capacity within a rational period of time of probably between 10 and 15 years?
I'm just trying to think if I've seen. I mean, I know research has been done out there both about what happens when you, when you do add a pretty healthy amount. The other thing that happens is you have what's called filtering. So right now, everything's either really, really high-end or sort of lower end in some cases. But the choice is more at the high end. So if we provide more choice across the spectrum, it allows people to sort of filter through the housing market, getting people who really need more naturally occurring affordable housing into those units and allowing the people who can afford it to move into the newer stuff. So I've seen studies on that where it really helps actually sort of help with affordability, not to some degree de-restricted affordability, because you'll have the 12 and a half percent, but more so just general affordability across the board. One thing to think about too is, you know, Needham's not the only town in the greater Boston region and the whole region, the whole state, really the whole country has a housing crisis at this point and housing shortage. If Needham were the only town to do 1,800 units and nobody else did anything, I'm not sure it would make a huge difference in terms of prices because the demand is just so high. But I think if everybody hopefully kind of does their part, or at least some, some of their part, I hope that that will at least moderate prices so that we're not seeing, you know, 4, 5, 6% rent increases every year because the demand's so high, vacancy is so low. What choice do people have but to either pay or move out?
Eric, can I, can I, can you talk a little bit more so that everybody understands that when the Kendrick was built, it was in an area that had larger lots. Everything on this side and on this corridor has tiny lots. And so the way that it would start being implemented would be at a very slow rate because of the amount of units you can get per lot.
Correct, yeah. The parcels, if you look at the parcel map for the districts that have been mapped out under both scenarios, the parcels are much smaller than what we're seeing for the Kendrick and some of the other larger multifamily developments that have happened in the town over time. So it sort of leads to maybe one of two things. One, a very incremental approach where property owners on an individual basis are going to have to make that decision as to whether they do something or they sell to someone who wants to do it. Or the time and the expense someone would have to take to aggregate parcels. We know that takes time. You have to have many willing sellers at that point in order to have a project of size. So I think in either scenario, Natasha, you're right. I think this is going to take, take some time to build out. It's not going to happen overnight.
Or I suppose the alternative is to Natasha's point, if we're, if I saw that the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet in some cases, that some of those lots, for instance, in particular on Chestnut Street, which may have smaller lots and there may be some other smaller lots in other parts of various districts, that that would promote smaller units, smaller volume production. In other words, instead of an area like Avery Square, which is over four acres, which, you know, could produce between 150 and 200 units, it would be fewer of those type of developments and more of the small scale six to 10 units. Yes, exactly. Exactly right. That's right.
The other piece that I want to say, I think, Lee, you had mentioned that when you did change the zoning on Chestnut Street, it didn't, you didn't have any housing production and the only true housing production that's happened is the 50 West based on all that zoning.
I think that's true. I think it's, I think it's in large part because of, because of the fractional ownership. And the fact that people have tenants in those buildings and that there just wasn't an interest to make the conversion.
Question. Related to 100 West, there was the proposal up there for the note about if we went to four stories, I think it says 7.5% workforce housing. Now I assume we're still having to have the 12 and a half percent portable housing going into play. Has that factor into the state's requirement? I know you're saying 12 and a half. We should be able to easily meet that in the study, but how does the addition of the 7.5% workforce housing plus the 12 and a half percent affordable housing, has that factor into any required study that has to be done as far as feasibility? Because I mean, I'm all for adding the workforce housing, let me just say that. I just want to know how, what affects.
Yeah, so. Thanks, appreciate that. It's a bonus. So it's, it's voluntary. So in order to unlock that additional half-story, you would then be either doing a mixed-use building, which would be part of the bonus, or the 7 and a half percent workforce.
So with the, with the bonus, it would might affect the state's requirement for the study?
As far as I know, that's correct. The EFA is just based on the 12 and a half percent because we're exceeding the state's 10% requirement.
And it's not mandated.
Yeah, it's not.
And that's.
And you, if you're developing more than six, a building of more than six units, you have to do that 12 and a half percent. Whereas the other is, you could choose to do it or not as a way to unlock that half-story.
So but every, every six-plus unit in MBTA Community Act that we're putting here is going to have to go through a feasibility study. Because it's 12 and a half percent.
No, no, that is, the feasibility study is for the model. It doesn't apply to individual projects.
Oh, there's none at home.
Correct. So I'm, I'm happy to give you the detail. So for the EFA, what the state asks is for us to test that 12 and a half percent and make sure that it doesn't put up any financial barriers. So the way we do that is because we can't test it on every parcel, well, could, but we're not going to. We picked, I think, four or five different sizes of development that are sort of common within what the zoning would allow. So like we picked a six-unit, a 25-unit, a 50-unit, 100-unit, like 150-unit building, something like that. And we tested the 12 and a half percent requirement on those to make sure that it was still financially viable. And the state will then say, you've tested a reasonable number of scenarios, so we should be good to go.
Thank you.
I just wanted to observe that you started that question with 100 West. And the workforce zoning bonus does not apply to 100 West. It's not in the zoning.
I thought, well, I thought there was a note that allowing the extra floor, it was suggested we include some workforce housing. Did I miss something? I thought that's what.
I think what happened was the committee recommended that the planning board as part of its process, look at providing that same provision at the Avery Square overlay. It's not in the proposal, it's going to the state, but was recommended the planning board consider it at the zoning per town meeting.
Yes, okay, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chair. Oh, just a question. There was a significant amount of methodology that was explained on the fiscal impact analysis. Can you talk a little bit about the methodology that you have for the traffic stuff? And what the scope for that? And, you know, is there, is there anything about it in connection? Just more than the spine? Because we obviously know that, you know, you put more pressure on the spine, more pressure on the other, you know, minor arterial, minor collector routes, et cetera, et cetera. So I know there was a lot of, a lot of great methodology that was explained on fiscal impact, but can you speak about the traffic?
Yeah, happy to. And so we worked with our town engineer and director of streets and.
Transportation.
Transportation, new title. And what we have scoped out is a series of tasks first. We compiled all of the existing data that we have for traffic counts that we feel are still valid and can be used so that we're not doing redundant work. So the first task is for the consulting firm to review that existing traffic data, collect missing counts. We have a scope that includes the series of intersections and streets that we want them to look at across the zoned map areas. Those counts will be collected before the end of school. And then the engineering firm will analyze four things. They'll analyze existing conditions today across that zoned area. The, they'll do a no-build scenario for looking out to 2034. So we decided on a 10-year time horizon. They're going to do conditions under the likely build of the base scenario, looking at 2034. And again, the likely build of the neighborhood housing plan looking out to 2034. Kind of scoping the likely build was similar to this traffic site that had been done for the Needham Center overlay zoning when that had been done. And then lastly, the scope of the traffic study will include an assessed impact on the chosen intersections and some high-level recommendations if it is identified that an intersection will exceed capacity. The firm will include possible mitigation strategies. So it might, they might say change signal timing, expand the roadway. They will not be providing kind of a design for that mitigation, just high-level understanding for us of what policy options might be available to us.
Thank you.
I have something to that also, Katie. Just sorry, really quick that. Submission requirements for the site plan review include item O. There are A through O. O is projected traffic volumes in relation to existing and reasonably anticipated conditions based on standards from the Institute of Transportation Engineers and prepared by a licensed traffic engineer. So for each project, even though it sounds a right there work, there's a projected traffic.
No, agree. I just wanted to see more of the O on the whole of it.
No, no, I understand, but just to say for, for the planning board, just for them to know that they're, even though, even though Attorney mentioned that there were certain things that it was, that we could review, this is one of the things that is part of the submission requirement.
Thank you. This to them.
Thank you. A question about the design standards, I was looking at the draft zoning. And one thing, so I understand that the housing cannot be subject to special permit. It has to be by site plan review only. It looked to me like there were some other design requirements that would normally be by special permit, but here are not. So in particular, those retaining walls, for instance, like very tall retaining walls in our zoning currently require a special permit. But under this zoning, would just require an attestation that the engineer certified that it would not increase water flow, for instance. Is that a legal requirement that the entire site not be subject to special permit or is it just for the housing?
I need some likes. So the guidance that we've heard from HLC, there, there are a number of communities that have special permit requirements for certain conditions. You mentioned retaining walls. There are communities that have a special permit for flood zones or water resource districts, et cetera. The advice or the, the information that we've received from HLC is that anything that would otherwise require a special permit, the criteria for that special permit be incorporated into the site plan review process so that the use is not requiring a second special permit, but the criteria are still part of the review that the planning board does. So wherever we've seen in the zoning a requirement for a special permit that might have an impact on the multifamily development, we've, we've tried to pull that into the site plan review process. So it's still being reviewed. It's not, just not requiring that next level up.
Okay, thank you. That's my most. The other question I had was about the propensity for change model. The, the assumption that I see to a lot of the lifting is there's a 50% difference in assessed value. Do you know? Is that validated? Look, I think I remember in the home discussions, we were talking about what true dynamic would be. Can you talk about that assumption specifically and why 50%?
Sure. It actually came from a discussion I had with some of my other business partners who have been doing this for a long time. And we do a lot of downtown planning and like kind of corridor revitalization planning. And a lot of times we'll use a metric which takes a look at the building to land value ratio and where the land is typically 50 or 60% higher than the building value. We usually will use that as a potential indicator for underutilization from the built standpoint. So as we were looking at how to maybe think about the percentages for the propensity model, we landed on that sort of 50%. Then kind of truth tested that, once we mapped it all in GIS, like all the percentages, the colored maps that you might have remembered Josh from the meeting, you know, it sort of looked like 50% gave us a fairly reasonable number. And also just looking at what is on those parcels today, like for example, a one-story, maybe underutilized commercial building might have a higher propensity for change than what might be a, you know, a two-story multifamily or a mixed-use building or something like that. So that was kind of the approach that we took.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Thank you. And thank you for all this, the presentation and all the great work. There's a lot of reading to be done. I look forward to doing it. I have, I'll have more questions after that. But two I wanted to focus on tonight were, one, I guess, is there a definition of a unit in, in here? I've heard you mention studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. So when I look at currently, you know, existing, 775 in the town or neighborhood housing plan unit capacity 3,0294, do we have a breakdown of what those are between studios or what they are currently and then what your model is, what the breakdown is of those between studios, one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom?
So for the units that are actually existing on the ground today within the.
Right, just seven, seven, seven.
Yep. The staff pulled that number together, so I don't have the breakdown. Some of them may be single-family homes, some of them are are multifamilies. I don't have the exact breakdown of what those units are on the ground today.
Okay, well, then let's go all the way to the other stream to the three thousand two ninety-four. What's the breakdown of those between studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedrooms?
So in the MBTA compliance model itself, which is what generates that three thousand two hundred number, there is no there is no identification of the unit type or the unit size. What the model does is it calculates on a parcel-by-parcel basis a building envelope, so the volume, the volumetric measure of the building based on the zoning that we put into the model. So let's say, for example, the volume of that future building is ten thousand square feet. The model will take that ten thousand square feet of building envelope and divide it by a standard one thousand square feet per unit to come up with ten units in total.
So it just based on units, it's impossible to sort of extrapolate how many people that could translate into?
Add to Eric's point, the model for unit capacity assumes just the thousand square foot, but in some of the other analyses used by RKG and the population estimates that we use to inform the capital impacts, we did use a breakdown of assuming that ten percent of the units would be studios, forty-five percent would be one bedrooms, thirty-five percent would be two bedrooms and ten percent would be three bedrooms. So we did, even though the unit capacity model doesn't make that differentiation, we did on the fiscal impact, the school enrollment and the capital impact.
And then my other question for now is, I just more out of curiosity, the terminology for neighborhood housing plan unit capacity. Where did neighborhood housing plan come up? Is that, what about that makes it a neighborhood plan as opposed to the base plan?
Well, I came up with that. And my thinking was, and essentially the group's thinking, was that we had looked very carefully at each district on its own to make sure that it had what we felt were the necessary elements of responding appropriately to the constraints of the location, to making sure that there were walkable areas, that there were amenities in each of these locations, and trying to be sensitive to shading and layout and heights so that each of these areas could stand alone and that they would provide a neighborhood. I think part of the MBTA's requirement that each district be at least five acres was to make sure that you didn't just have like one building floored down here with nothing around it and to to really create an ecosystem. And that's what we tried to do and we called that a first.
But isn't that, isn't the base the same thing? I mean, isn't? I guess my understanding, what I understand is if if you looked at, I understand and appreciate doing it that way, but that's what the base model is. So why shouldn't the base model be called that?
The base model is primarily based on existing zoning. There are a few tweaks. We did add some housing to the areas that previously had not had it. But it was the, the aim of that plan is to tweak as little as possible, the existing zoning to come into compliance. The aim of the neighborhood housing plan was housing production.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one question. This is perhaps more for Lee. To what degree, to what degree we have an overlay district, does it counteract or eliminate another overlay district that is underneath that?
It doesn't contradict it. The individual who wants to develop property has the opportunity to decide under what set of rules they want to develop under. So they could develop under the underlying zoning or the, if there are, if there's like Chestnut Street, there'll be the Chestnut Street overlay, or there'll be the MBTA overlay. And once they select the option that they want to develop under, then they fall within the rules for that particular overlay.
Yes, cool.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I too want to express my appreciation for the hours and hours of work that the committee has put in focusing on all those parcels. And unlike John, my husband was out of town this weekend, so the answer is I spent hours and hours all weekend long watching home meetings and reading through the documentation. So in doing that, that led me to pepper some questions at Katie predominantly, since the weekend ended. I want to start by saying that I'm a hundred percent a supporter of MBTA communities. When I think we look at our community, which is growing and increasing exclusivity, I think that's something that many of us regret and that we wish were a little bit different. But I know that if we want to see things being more affordable, we need to have more diverse housing options. We need to have more smaller options. We need more housing, period. Supply and demand is a big part of what's going on here right now. So I do hear the concerns about, you know, how many apartments, how quickly. I get that unease. I think we've had actually a very good description tonight about all the gates that are in place that are going to limit housing production under this plan. While it is compliant with the request from the state, it's not that we expect those units to appear. I think about this particularly when I drive past Modera, this traffic question, which I'm delighted to hear that we're spending more time investigating, but in the last five or six years since Modera opened, I've seen precisely two cars exit Modera and zero cars enter it. And I understand it's full. So somewhere there is traffic and somewhere it's coming from apartment complexes, but it's hard to find it sometimes. Okay. Since the public comment was completed on March twenty-eighth, I think there have been a number of changes that have become, that either have been made or become more evident. The charts that existed before in March twenty-eighth and before were sort of higher level. I'm going to characterize and there's been more detail that's come out since then. So on March fourth, I know we learned about the base zoning and the neighborhood zoning. And we've learned at that time, I'm going to focus now on one hundred West, because one hundred West is a project that when I talk to people in town, they are all expecting that project to get built. So I'm hoping, in fact, that one hundred West comes back to life. But I want to think about that project in the context of this zoning. The base zoning and the neighborhood zoning for one hundred West is identical. That only happens in the Avery Square district. Every other district has some differences between base and neighborhood. One hundred West doesn't. Okay. Based on the feedback, right, that that I think we've heard, I know I've heard from some developers I've talked to over the course of the last year, we're hearing that that building will likely come down and rebuilt, be rebuilt as a new building. Why? Because the current building does not meet people's expectations for what an apartment, modern apartment would look like. And the owners are not trying to build a nineteen thirties vintage New York walk-up apartment. So if you want something different, you need something different. But in fact, the base zoning that we put in place at a one FAR would not permit you to rebuild the current building on that site. It is larger than a one FAR. So we've already put something more restrictive in place, and that's the zoning that exists on this property. Further, in the last month, we made it clear that the side setback of a hundred and ten feet in keeping with the residential district line that exists rather than the overlay district existing for that entire parcel, that reduces the size of that parcel by about twenty-five percent. Okay, making the footprint, again, more challenging to work with. We've also changed it with that side setback so that surface parking, and and we're actually kind of forcing at three stories people into surface parking, has to happen on what's remaining of the site. To make the surface parking for the apartments and the apartment building work is starting to get to be very difficult. Okay, it's not clear it can work. So that's another challenge. The fourth story, I already asked about the fourth story, but the fourth story is available by special permit. So again, I'm going to observe that there is only one special permit. Anywhere in this proposed zoning, it happens to exist on the parcel where the town knows there could likely be a project that might actually be built. And the conditions are such that that may be the only economically feasible path, although with the other constraints we've imposed, it's not clear to me that exists. The workforce zoning option isn't currently in this zoning. It's it's something that rather than applying, has now gone back to the planning board for consideration. In addition, we've added something, and in each of these comes with good intent. I want to be clear about that. But we now have a bike, a bike parking requirement for all of these MBTA zoning things. And while that may be an easy thing to accommodate if you build six units and you need six parking or six bike parking places. If you build a larger building, hundred and eighty-seven units is what a hundred percent efficient building comes up to on Avery Square, probably are not going to have a hundred and eighty-seven bikes in that building, but they are required to have all that parking, also contending for space on that lot. Okay, twenty-five percent of it needs to be covered parking by by our rule. Again, that will take up FAR in that spot. So I just am observing, we've placed a lot of constraints on it, on a parcel that I think a lot of us are hoping would get built. And it becomes less and less clear to me that that will be possible. All right. I wrote a letter before April fourth after I saw that, and I said, one of these parcels is not like the other. And in fact, my sense of that is stronger today than it was when I wrote that letter. I'm disappointed by that. I also learned about propensity for change as I read through all of this. And what I would observe is that our consultants have told us that the propensity for change in Avery Square is zero. They were trying to tell us what could possibly happen there. It's zero. So if that is what we want to have happen, then this is the zoning that should go forward. If we would like it to be something other than zero, I hope we will take a broader view of this to see how to get to something that makes one hundred West once again a vibrant, valued and contributing part of our community. So that's what I'm going to say. I have one separate question for Chris that's not exactly related to this, but sort of related to this. Mr. Matthews, when he was here earlier this evening, said that his zoning only applied to SRV and could apply possibly to MBTA communities. I haven't gone through all the zoning language to figure out where exactly his zoning really fits in that and how it flows through. And is he correct about the applicability of his FAR? Because I know sometimes when citizens write their own zoning, we don't understand the implications of how it goes together. Does it apply to this? Does it apply only to SRV? Do we have some sense of that? I don't know that there'd be an answer this evening, but I would like to understand your view of that statement. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, and I'm not sure I know the answer at the moment, but I can certainly look into that and report back.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I echo Mary Ann's comments. What's striking from what she said is that there, this parcel has kind of effectively been singled out, but unfortunately, it's been singled out for zero production, which I think is one site at over four acres that has the greatest opportunity for immediate change. I have seen correspondence from from the attorney for the property owner who makes certain suggestions and comments as part of the zoning relief. And now we're at a point after the public comment period. And I think the zoning was prepared after the public comment period. And we haven't really had an opportunity to really understand the impacts of this, except for the fact that our consultants are suggesting there's a zero propensity in one of the greatest sites for change that we'd all like to see active given and activated, given that that site for so many years has not been activated. So I do see the planning board playing an important role over the course of the next several months, not starting in August or September, a month before a town meeting, but effectively starting now to review the zoning in detail. I've only had a few days to go through it. I have a couple of questions actually I'll ask in a moment for Bill and for and for Ron Ruth. And yet I would say that we do have to start now. There are more things than just the recommendations. I think that what Home has proposed for the planning board for us to dig into and promote and some improvements between now and October, not to take away and to threaten the compliance in any way. But I think where our goal is to, on the one hand, ensure compliance, and yet the other goal is to actually incent development. I think there are some opportunities and some improvements that could be made. And there are some restrictions, I think, in some districts that may prove, that have already proved to have effectively a negative impact with zero, with zero development. I do, I do love the committee's work. I know this has been so many hours of staff time across many departments from the school department and also from Public Works and other departments, planning and obviously the town manager's office. And, you know, we're grateful. We've never had a scenario like this before where the planning boards received such a comprehensive and thorough zoning article already prepared, and I'm sure we'll be able to get through these tweaks and improvements in October without adversely impacting compliance, of course. And I thank everyone on the committee for the hard work and dedication over the course of the last many months to be able to get to this point and to the consultants. My question for Bill and for Ron, and I guess I'm putting you guys on the spot here, relates to this concept of affordable housing where we now have two levels introduced. If taken together, that's twenty percent affordability. And Bill, in your experience working with, you know, with large-scale multifamily developers and Ron, with your experience in your office representing developers, are you satisfied that, given the economics of the property values in Needham, the cost of construction and the prevailing interest rates for the next several years in particular, which are different in the residential sector than the commercial sector and construction, construction loans, are you satisfied that the market can bear twenty percent affordability?
First, and maybe that's appropriate because I frankly was one of the people or pushing hard for, I'd like to thank the other home members for a discussion about workforce housing. And so if I can give a little bit of a long-rinded answer, we had a long presentation in March twenty-eighth in this room. One of our three public presentations where we had participation from five hundred-plus people. One of the heavy themes of that presentation, at least in what I heard, was a strong request for, people did not use the word workforce housing, but they used the vocabulary of finding have housing for people of who are working in Needham but didn't necessarily have a one percent similar type income. And so it was a very strong theme from employers, from employers, from people in town saying that it's very important for Needham to provide what translates in real estate apartments to workforce housing. And so we were, we were able, as a committee, to come up with the approach of having, using the bonus space that we had talked about otherwise in mixed-use housing, in mixed-use retail, residential as an alternative to reach a workforce housing, because I'll speak for myself, not for the committee now, I guess all my comments are mine for myself. That, given Needham's MBTA Community Act is painted with a broad brush. It applies to a hundred and seventy-seven communities, but certainly not written with metro. It applies to 177 communities, but certainly not written with Metro West in mind. But we're working in Metro West and we're affecting Metro West. And land values are high. That's a given. And I think we all have observed, not just with single-family housing, but with multifamily housing, that the market in Needham drives redevelopment towards non-workforce housing type models. It drives to large units that will be, even if they're condominium structure or whether they're brought to the marketplaces of rental, very high rentals and non-responsive to workforce housing. And certainly that's one of the concerns, speaking for myself, I have in terms of how the MBTA Community Act gets implemented in Needham. And so something in my mind, it's important to have a response to workforce housing so that there's the potential to meet that demand. Obviously, the planning board and the town can develop workforce housing projects and programs outside of the context of the MBTA Act, and hopefully you all will do so. But in terms of, will the market accept, narrow question, will the market accept the 20%? Two elements of direct response. One, the economic analysis that we described earlier today, did the analysis not just in terms of the 12.5% affordable housing in Needham, but did the analysis all the way up to 20%. And that analysis supported that Needham theory on affordable housing could go to 20%. Workforce housing obviously is different than affordable housing per se. It is, it's a subset of it, I should say. And so we had the background and the economics to support that, yes, we could go to 20%. And also, this was becoming the form of bonus. And so there's additional space that's created for the development. And so for those two reasons, one because it's a bonus, one because our own analysis, our analysis, supported that it could go to 20%. I believe that it is possible.
Thank you.
I would agree 100% that the issue with regard to affordability and the need for affordable workforce housing is, you know, obviously one of the biggest, biggest concern, biggest components, biggest reasons for the MBTA Communities Act and for the common level of the whole. With the concern that I have with, well, let me back up for a second. When you look at a project to underwrite a multifamily project, there are certain things that are fixed. You know what the cost of money is going to be, you know what it's going to cost to operate the project, you know what your rents are going to be, you know what it's going to cost to build it. Really, the only variable in that equation is land. And so this kind of goes to the propensity to change component of this discussion. The more affordable or workforce housing that you have, that typically that comes out of the value of the land. So the more affordable housing or workforce housing that you have, your land price is going to go down. At some point, the land price will not be something that the seller will be willing to transact on, or that the multiple sellers, if you have three or four people or groups that you have to assemble, not all four of them are going to be willing to transact at that price. So the concern I would have with, and it's case by case, the higher the requirement for this housing is, the propensity for change diminishes, which means that you're not creating any houses per se, or any housing units per se. So if you have a project that is 50 units or 100 units, I think it's a question of whether you want to risk not having those 50 or 100 units in order to get some additional housing, whether it's affordable or workforce. It just comes down to the economics of it and the ability of people to transact.
Great. If there are no more questions, you want to wrap this up? And it's likely we'll vote, you want to make a motion? Anyone?
So for the purpose of submitting documents to the Executive Office of Housing and Land and Rural Communities, I would move that the draft, the two draft scenarios, the basic compliance plan and the neighborhood housing plan along with the draft zoning we submitted tomorrow, May 1st. Commentary, this does not conclude any changes in the future by the planning board or any other boards here.
Excellent. Any discussion? And we have a law. Hearing them have all those quarters, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? None? All right. Guys, thank you for coming. This is great.
Just adjourned.
Members of parliament, excuse me, members of parliament, please.
Jill, we have to adjourn. You need a motion.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any other committees here?
Nice to see you all. Thanks for joining.
We'll be back in five minutes.
Five minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
Good night. Good night.
What are you doing?
I couldn't.
Oh, sorry. Where's my party?
Was it? Oh, yeah.
...
All right. Miles, let me know.
Are you ready if we restart this? You are the gentleman who's been waiting out there this whole.
Loving it.
All right, I'm meeting, the select board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I could move the consent consentment agenda consent agenda. Consent is that consent and appointments? There's no appointments consent agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Sorry, could I ask that item seven approval of minutes be voted separately? I was not here for for all of those.
So under Robert's rules, you don't actually have to have attended a meeting to vote on the minutes.
Right, so it's specific to the executive sessions. There's no recording, so I can't review those.
Yes.
Okay, so I would appreciate it if we could vote this separately.
Sure, very good. Okay.
So then I'll move everything except number seven.
Seven, second. Okay, can we devote all those with favor?
Aye.
Any against? No. I mean, no, no one's against. I'm not voting yes.
And then I'll move item number seven.
Okay. And second.
Second.
Okay, great. If you want to vote, all those with favor.
Aye.
And I abstain.
One up station. Okay, excellent. Thanks so much.
And I'm glad to see the black parties are beginning to good sign springers and tomorrow coming.
Thank you. All right, so next on the agenda, we're introducing Rob McLean, Director of the Need Free Public Library. Deputy Town Manager Katie King.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm taking off my housing hat and putting on my favorite hat, which is one of an avid reader. And I am so pleased to introduce Rob McLean. He's our new library director. He started this last week.
Yes.
We could go Monday. And Rob comes to us from Waymouth, where he was the Director of the Waymouth Public Library since 2010. He served as the President of the Old Colony Library Network, which is the Minuteman equivalent for the Waymouth area. Rob's a graduate of Simmons College and Harvard College. And two things that jumped out at me quite a bit throughout the interview process. First, he has a lot of building project experience. He did a full new build of a library in Waymouth and a historic renovation of their branch library. And we have a lot of building projects ahead of us, hopefully, for the library. And second, he's so passionate about libraries and making sure they're connected to the community, a reflection of the community, and they evolve with the community. And that came out loud and clear throughout the interview process. So we're so excited to have Rob on board. Happy to introduce him.
Thank you. You want to say a few words?
Sure, I can say many words, but it's been a long night. I'm really thrilled to be here. I'm still in the process of learning names and faces, but also more importantly, learning about Needham. And it's, I don't know Needham. I know Waymouth a lot. I grew up there and was a friend and a trustee before a director. So this is a great challenge to know what the needs are for Needham patrons and residents so that our staff can continue to excel and exceed and providing great library services for everybody. It's a great time for the Needham Free Public Library with the four-phase space study and the strategic plan in place. The staff are excited and they're exceptional. And I think we've got a great future, short term and long term. And I'm just excited to join the team and be here to help Needham still thrive.
Thank you.
So I was really excited when I saw your resume to see that you started with Rhodes Scholar because I thought, you know, that means you've definitely got a key demographic under control. And I do see that you've been involved in children's and teen programming, but we are expecting that the youngins are going to become your favorite partners in town. If you haven't met all of them already, they're coming your way.
All right, excellent.
There you go. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. The Needham Public Library is the most popular institute institution in Needham. So I I am appreciative that you're taking on this challenge and we look forward to you spending many years here.
Thank you. Me too.
Welcome. I look forward to talking to you.
Thanks.
Yeah, welcome to Needham. It sounds like you've done a lot of interesting stuff, the Lefty, Lefty, Do, Pre, Era.
Yes.
And no, it does sound like you've done a lot of great projects in Waymouth.
Yeah, we accomplished a lot with passionate staff and small budgets, but yeah.
Okay, now, my question. What's your favorite book?
Huck Finn.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah. It's probably the only, one of the few books that ever made me laugh out loud. But, yep, I'm a reader. I'm a slow reader, but I am always reading. If I could give a shout out to some of the great partners the library has, I'll be brief. The Needham Library Foundation of Needham and the Friends of the Needham Libraries are fantastic groups that do phenomenal work, working thousands of hours every year for for the library, raising much needed money. And we appreciate everything they do. I attended the Friends meeting last night, and it's just a couple of dozen dedicated people who love Needham and really love their library. And I'm really excited to join them to help it.
Thank you.
It's great to meet you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda, we're gonna hop over Masala Art and we're gonna go to Eversource. Grant of location is Joanne Callender.
Mr. Chair, go ahead. Let me go ahead and I want to see if this is going to be a substitute.
Okay, sure. Okay.
Hi, this is Jackie, Deputy from Eversource. Can you hear me?
You're a little soft, but yes.
Hi, Joanne had an emergency, family emergency, so I took her spot tonight. And thank you for letting me join the Needham Town Hearing. We, Eversource would like to install approximately eight feet of conduit in Whitman Road. The reason for the work is to provide electric service to 34 Whitman Road.
Thirty-four, right, okay. Okay, I would ask Town Manager, everything's in order? Would Kate?
You could just give us a thumbs up.
Thumbs up? Okay, Jackie, seems everything's in order for the town side. Do I have any colleagues have questions?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, then I would accept a motion.
And Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately eight feet of conduit in Whitman.
Mr. Chair, is this a public hearing?
Thank you, Josh. This is a public hearing. Would anyone wish to make, anyone online? Anyone in the room? Okay. We have a motion. We have a second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Any discussion? Okay, here we go. We're coming to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Silence. Next, Jackie, we have a public hearing for Whitman Road again.
Yes, Eversource would like to install approximately 12 feet of conduit in Whitman Road, and this is to provide electric service to 99 Whitman Road.
Ninety-nine, okay, thank you very much. Okay. Kate Fitzpatrick, is everything in order?
Yes.
Everything's in order. Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Does anyone have any comments? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, thank you very much. Any of my colleagues, questions?
I have no questions.
I would entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately 12 feet of conduit in Whitman Road.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, here we go. We come to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you and us.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a public hearing of outdoor license dining license at Eat Farmhouse, LLC, doing business as The Farmhouse. We have Dora Tavel Sanchez-Luce owner. She, is she online?
She's here. Come on up. Hi.
Thank you for coming here. According to the agenda, it's still seven o'clock. I'm sorry, we're, so it's not. Okay, Dora, I assume you are seeking to request an acquaintance with outdoor dining. And you are, when you, the purpose, seating space in the back, if the inline's behind the restaurant, you also requesting an exception to the Select Board policy, Select Board License 016, to permit more than three parking spaces to be used for outdoor dining. This is the first part. We're gonna be doing a, talking about your liquor license as well, but this is the first part to get the outdoor dining. Do you have anything you want to add? Nothing? Okay, concise. Do any of my colleagues have questions?
And Dora, just since this is also a public hearing, so members of the public understand, the proposal actually is to do the same thing that you did outside last summer, to make that a permanent arrangement. It actually causes shift in sort of where your seating is in your restaurant for the summer period overall. But just so people know what the real context is that we're talking.
Yeah, the patio is the same, the setup is the exact same thing we've done in 21, 22, 23, the last three years.
And this will make it permanent, so you won't have to come back to us again, which I know you will dearly appreciate.
Thank you.
Great. Now, this is a hearing, so a public hearing. Does anyone have comments in the room or on Zoom? No one in the room? All right, any thoughts for my colleagues?
Yeah, just I love what you've done with the place. It's a very nice area and it's appreciated.
Thank you.
Great. Any other comments? All right, I would entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the Board vote to approve an outdoor dining license for Eat Farmhouse, LLC, doing business as The Farmhouse, and to grant an exception to Select Board Policy SB OIC 016 to permit additional parking spaces to be used for outdoor dining.
Second.
Great. All right, any other comments? Here we go. We come to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there none? So there is, you have to have this. All right, we have another here, please. Coming up to your alcohol, alteration of premises for an all alcohol license in a restaurant for Eat Farmhouse, LLC, doing business as The Farmhouse. This too is a continuation, which in the last few years, there are no changes. And it is on a proposed, I suppose, area which is located on an easement upon which the town has rights to public parking. Do you have anything you want to add? Describe, tell us. And you might, this is a public hearing. Is anyone in the room or anyone on Zoom want to make a comment? Do any of my colleagues wish to make a comment?
So I know that this is a required part of the process with the change in premises. Any premises are advertised and have to go back to the ABCC for final approval as well once it's gone through the town. So it's a key part. I was just going to say thank you. We've actually spent a lot of time talking with a number of restaurant owners related to violations for underage service. And I haven't seen you, so I am grateful for the work that you and your staff do.
Well, I'm grateful to Needham because you offer something that no other town, I have a restaurant in another town, and you guys like give lunch and make free tips training and do it twice a year, I think. I mean, no other town does that. And also, Needham during COVID was, if this is public, was incredible for restaurant owners, like to let us do the part, the concrete barriers. And Needham, like if anybody's watching and you live in Needham, I mean, you're, you're really lucky and maybe the taxes are high, but this is why. And the town really does do a lot. Much more than other towns, like 100% more. And they don't have to do that. They don't have to do that. And you guys do. So it's, it's great to have a restaurant here. It's hard, but it's worth, like, we've been here 11 years, so.
Well, I'm grateful, and my only complaint is you should serve butterscotch pudding more often.
Well, I have it on the menu all the time at Buttercup, so come to Buttercup.
I'll have to go to Buttercup.
But, you're right, it should be a staple. Yeah, that's not in Needham, but.
All right.
Excellent. Any other?
Other people might have questions.
None? Josh, none? Okay, great. I would entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board vote to approve the Alteration of Premises Amendment application for Eat Farmhouse, LLC, and the vote for the amendment application to the ABCC for review and final approval.
Second.
Okay. And we're not going to add the butterscotch motion?
No, we won't make it required.
That's the caveat, right?
It's just a.
All right, any other discussion? Here we go. We come to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, see you then. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And Miles, poor Miles. I put him through so much.
That is in the record. Okay, that's in the minutes.
We all do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miles.
Okay. Next, we have Town Manager's report. Kate Fitzpatrick.
We have my favorite chart coming up again.
American Rescue Plan Act funding. This is discussion only.
Discussion only, just to let the board know that again, towards the end of the ARPA funds, while it shows approximately 3.6 million remaining, we're looking at closer to about 114,000 encumbered. We, we have a meeting coming up with the county. We should have our bids finalized and encumbered for all the walk-up line money by early June. And then the reservoir project has come in under budget for us, so that was helpful. So we are working to reallocate some, a little bit additional money that would help us with Walker. And then we would like to allocate the rest of the county money through the county, all to the 128 sewer interceptor. So we don't want to leave a dollar on the table. And they're already started out there. And we think that we could just keep going foot after foot after foot with that money. So next time, I should be able to give you a much better estimate once we've heard from the county, got their approval.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question? So if, whatever money we're, we can appropriate to the sewer interceptor, would that reduce the amount of debt that town meeting, well, that the town would have to borrow for that project?
Yes, we're still looking to do phase two with the debt financing in annual town meeting, but the next phase might get lower because we have done this work.
So this would be applied to the phase three, you're saying?
It would reduce the scope of phase three, I would think, or reduce the scope of phase two, and then that would move it to phase three.
Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll give you a chart once we finish them.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have consolidation of information technology functions.
As you know, this is an item on the town meeting warrant. After lots of conversation and for many months, the school committee voted to approve this memorandum of understanding between the school committee and the Select Board, setting forth the rules of engagement of how this process might work. And they voted that at the meeting on April 23rd. And we discussed this MOU at the board's last meeting and would ask that the board recommend adoption so that we can tell town meeting and get it posted before the posting deadline on Thursday.
Excellent. Could you just walk through a bit in the, as a budget item? How does the town FTEs go to the school? And then it's in the budget as a line item under schools?
Well, it's under line item for municipal information technology, so, but it is part of the educational. Line 22, I believe, that is. So the six, the six FTEs and associated expenses are moving over to that line.
Correct.
The warrant article, as a standalone warrant article, includes some transitional items that may not be recurring. It also includes an actual vote of town meeting to allow this under chapter 70. And there are some items in that warrant article that we're just not sure how much they're going to be needed. And so we put them in the warrant article, and then in FR 26, it'll be clear whether they're needed or where they're needed. And some of that, some of that appropriation under article will end up in the line item 22 in FR 26.
Thank you.
And I think any of the IT staff currently budgeted in the school department remains in the school department and are not being moved into the new supply team.
That's very well.
Yes, I had a question about the, the MOU, but the, I mean, I think it covers everything that I had expected. The only thing was the service level agreement. When do you expect those, those to be adopted or defined?
One of the items in the warrant article is for some consulting assistance that will help us put those together. So we would expect that to begin in that for 25.
Okay. Any other question? Okay, I would entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board vote to approve the Information Technology Consolidation memorandum of understanding between the Select Board and the school committee. Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, here we go. None. We're coming to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Next.
Mr. Chair, there are a number of items the board needs to take up or research up. I would ask that Dave, if you would come up, we have some complicated financing potential amendments. Discuss, Katie? Do we want to talk about 21 first? It looks like that's the first one that I.
It looks like that's the first one that I hit when I'm just going through here. You want to update on that?
Certainly. The Park and Recreation Commission is meeting tomorrow night.
So this is the tennis courts, just so that people generally know what the topic is.
The Park and Recreation Commission is meeting tomorrow night, and it's our recommendation that, that they vote to withdraw the item from this town meeting. It was really going to be very difficult for us to get the work mobilized this summer, so I really don't, I personally don't see that. It's pushing it off a year, this is the timing that it would be on. If, the community preservation committee would meet the first night of town meeting, and, and they, as they have in the past, they, I've never seen them move an article to town meeting that the proponents had asked them to withdraw. We will ask the CPC if they would work with us to have this project move out of cycle so that we could fund it in the fall. Again, the CPC has worked with us in the past. They're fully up to speed on the tennis courts, but as board members know, the, we just weren't able to get the permitting done, and there remain many questions about the project, including whether there will be conditions in the special permit that might change the cost or might require us to do some gross engineering. So we think that we just need a couple of more months and hope that we could bring this to town meeting in October so they could be constructed in the construction season after the tennis season in 25.
There's a wrinkle on this, though, about the financing in the tennis courts. Do you want to mention that?
The, there is some items included, funding sources included in the high school tennis courts that we need to reappropriate at this town meeting. And there's a proposal for those two items. The one specific item that needs to be addressed is the $10,804, which is excess funds from a capital project that was closed out, that was Article 43 from the 2015 Annual Town Meeting. And we need to reappropriate that to another project that would be eligible to have those funds appropriated towards. And I would be recommending to the board two actions. The first action would be to reopen your recommendation on the Public Works Building, which has various funding sources, including debt of $1,600,000. That we strike the borrowing amount of $1,600,000 and replace that with the combination of that $10,804, which is in Article 21, that would not be needed. Second, there was a rounding amount of overlay surplus that was added to the tennis courts that would be freed up by deferring action on that. I would recommend that those monies also be put towards the Public Works Building. So that's an even $160,000. And the last piece of that would be the balance, which would be $1,440,000, that that would be funded by a transfer from free cash. We have not yet received certification of our free cash, but there is no reason that it would not be certified by the time that town meeting commences on Monday night. The Department of Revenue is aware of our deadline, and the only requirement is that they certify it before town meeting votes. So we should have that, knowing that the board meeting, in a formal meeting this evening, I would seek the board's approval to have a substitute motion, you know, sorry, to amend your main motion to make those three changes, which we will provide the wording to you. So you'll have it at town meeting, but effectively, all that I'm telling you is we'll be striking the borrowing and replacing it with cash financing from three sources.
Okay, so that, yeah, that fixes the main sense of that.
That's correct, so that would be entirely a cash appropriation. That will take care of the issue of withdrawing the high school tennis courts from consideration at the annual town meeting.
The other piece is, this is all fast-moving, so we haven't discussed with the finance committee yet, so, and they've voted to support this article, so just putting that out.
And I want to know that the board is supportive of taking these actions, so I could report that to the finance committee tomorrow night, so they would have an opportunity to amend their recommendation as well.
Okay. Do you need, what do you need, was a sense of it, do you need a vote?
The, the, well, the, the vote would be good, but certainly a sense is also fine. The, either work, as long as I can report that the select board and the finance committee, if you both act in the same thing that I'm recommending, are on the same page going to town meeting, staying the same thing to town meeting.
Want to discuss it?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a question. I understand that, correct me if I'm wrong, that I, I think this is driven by longer-than-anticipated permitting process by the planning board because the neighbors have some concerns, and I think that things are trying to be worked out to accommodate those concerns. If, my understanding from Park and Rec is that additional courts are needed, the alternative, I think, would be to, to go to town meeting and, and seek funding, have a discussion, and at a later point have, have the concerns be resolved. I don't know if that's, that's better, but it seems less complicated.
It's, the, the concerns that we have is that we fully expect the planning board to include provisions that would require screening and plantings that we just simply don't have in the budget. So we, we don't know that the budget that we presented to town meeting is going to cover the plan, and we won't know that before town meeting is adjourned.
So you anticipate that the cost will be higher?
It's likely, or we have to relook at what's in design.
Yes.
If we, if we do this reallocation, I assume that the $1 million from the athletic stabilization fund just remains there and waits for the next go-round of the tennis courts?
That's correct, or whatever project.
I would support the recommendation that you've made. I, I guess the one question that I would have is when we come back to the fall, right, there's this $149,010.804, so that will be a delta. I mean, we don't know what the delta is because we don't know what the new cost will be by the fall, once they got a project that they're ready to size, right? So I think, is that your thinking, once we know what that reality is, then you'll figure out where that potential funding delta can come from in the fall?
That, that is correct. And I'm getting a reminder, for instance, the overlay surplus would not be available anyways because it closes out on June 30th, if not appropriated.
Okay, so we'll have to have them other sources.
Correct.
Yeah.
I trusted Dave, I was just going to say.
Right. I understand the tennis court issue is a bit tangled, so find that we, that will probably be pulled. So it seems like it's an opportunity to avoid that.
Yes, that is a benefit to this as well.
This is an upside. So, oh, yes, you come to taking a vote, you want to think on it?
To, I mean, I would wait for a formal request to withdraw the article from the proponents.
Oh, we, okay.
If that's.
So what are we doing, all right, calendar-wise?
If the board, if the proponents vote tomorrow night at?
Six.
Six thirty. If they go to a draw tomorrow night, if we can report to the finance committee that it's the sense of view that this plan would be approved on Monday next, then I think that would all be, and, and if that's your position, then I can communicate to the moderator on Friday that we expected amendment to that.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay. And we can get that, this amendment in writing to the board this weekend?
Yes, and I would have the, the amendment for the finance committee to see tomorrow night.
Great. Okay, so there isn't any action on 21 then? But that takes us to 28.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, but same, just basically we go the same approach.
The same thing is we would be looking to finance that from free cash, which we should have certified prior to the start of town meeting on Monday evening, and that the recommendation would be that, that be amended by striking provisions referring to debt and substituting a transfer from free cash. So that would be a motion to amend the main motion.
I'm sorry, okay, so it's a million two, right?
Specifically, what you will be seeing is that we would ask that they, that it be striked, that, from the word, "The treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said sum under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 344, Section 7," and replacing that the words after the word "that $1,275,000 be transferred from free cash," semicolon, or take any other action relative thereto.
Can I ask, even though we don't have the free cash numbers, it sounds like you anticipate that we will have it for this article?
Yes, we would have to have free cash certified before the start of town meeting for basically the warrant.
Yes.
So it doesn't matter which article we're looking at.
Dave is confident it will be more than the $15 million.
That was my last question, next question.
By the amount of 1.275 and 1.6.
Yes, 2,715,000 more.
Thank you. Okay.
Um, so, do I understand that we could make a motion now related to Article 28 to, that the select board adopt Article 28 as amended to reflect the funding coming, being transferred from free cash?
The board can do that, yes.
I would support that, second.
Second, all right. Any other discussion? Good, all right, let's have a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Kevin, you get to explain this.
I know it's a month ago.
I was going to 41 unless you had one that I'm missing. Next item is our, is our 41.
The select board should remove restrictions, right?
Kate, thank you for, for giving the MOA. Has that been agreed to by?
No, and unfortunately, the chair of the Housing Authority had a family emergency, so I really don't see us getting there. But I do expect the main points of the MOA to be included in our FAQ, and so be able to present that to town meeting, but I am just coordinating with the Housing Authority staff to make sure that we put that in. But it is as, the, the bullet points are as we have, would have in the.
Thank you, I, I was comfortable with those bullet points. I had one question that came up during the Women Voters Meeting, who, how is it enforceable? That specifically that there's a preference for elderly housing?
We would expect that the select board would routinely meet with the Housing Authority and ask them what, 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 what their census is, and if it's, you know, not quite there, I think it could be built in.
Can our affordable housing specialists also?
Absolutely, yeah, maybe even the trust could have that. That's a good question.
Thank you.
And the expectation around the affordability becomes a deed restriction, so this, your question, I think, Josh, really relates to who becomes of this and how that.
The age restriction.
Then the age, right.
The age, yeah, the, I, I didn't see any additional deed restrictions that are going to be going.
There's just a, there's an affordable housing restriction, which is reported, that's the affordability piece. The, this deed restriction involves the, the expectation if elderly is taken off the deed, that the Housing Authority will prioritize, as it has elderly and disabled.
Right.
And this isn't directly related to this article, but my understanding is that through all of these various changes, there would no longer be a requirement for elderly and disabled housing, though there would be a preference. And the affordability components would be set at an average of 60% of area median income.
Correct.
Meaning, I, I believe the intention is of the vast majority to be below that, as currently is, below 30%, but allowing for up to 80% for individuals, such that the average is 60%.
Correct, exactly.
So.
I would accept, yeah, entertain a motion, kind of want to.
Mr. Chair, I would move that the select board recommend adoption of Article 41, authorized select board to remove restrictions.
Second.
Any discussion? Here we come to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right. Article 44.
43.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. 43, citizens petition to send death cards to the.
Do we have any guidance about?
Petitioner indicates that he's in conversation with the moderator about what actions might be taken.
Right.
If the select board's article passes first. For example, to lay it on the table.
Okay.
As a motion to lay it on the table.
Do we need to take any vote on this, or can we just leave it?
Yeah, we could not take, no position taken.
Well, I mean, I, I don't actually want to say no position taken, I just mean, don't take a vote at this time. If it gets laid on the table immediately following ours, I'm okay with that. I mean, otherwise, I mean, my, my inclination is to vote no, because we voted yes on our article, it comes first, it should, crap happened there, but. Let me just take a vote on the table if we have to.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Article 44, this is petition to amend zoning by law dimension regulation. Don't know. As we saw today, there was some talks, time to think, anyone to vote?
So I didn't re-ask Chris, there was some kind of a message that Chris hadn't answered to my question.
I don't know that he's, I mean, the question is about whether the article information is completely accurate or, Mr. Matthews, we did tell him we can post something on the website and speak to it at a town meeting, but I'm not sure that weighs the, you know, whether you want to vote or not.
Right. Thoughts?
I appreciate the, the thought behind this, and I definitely appreciate the idea of aligning the definition of a thing with the thing itself. So I, I think this idea needs more work and application, so I would, I would move that the board not recommend this article for adoption, Article 44 for adoption.
My second question.
Okay.
And I, I want it to be studied more. I, I don't think it's our role to, I think it would be referred to the planning board if anyone, but I don't think it's our role to tell the planning board to take it up. If there is a motion from the floor of town meeting to refer to the planning board, I, as a town meeting member, will vote in favor of that.
Sure, I think they've already said that they're planning to take that, assuming that this doesn't pass, but even if it does, because part of the issue that I see with it is that it's not applied across town. So I think they were going to, they were going to broaden the discussion.
Oh, that's not my concern. I mean, I, I think our existing zoning by law only. Oh, that's not my concern. I mean, I think our existing zoning by law only applies FAR to single residence B and general residence, I believe. And I think this doesn't change that, it keeps that narrow application. I guess my only concern is that, the impact. So how, how would, how, how would buildings look? So would they be taller and narrower? Would they be larger and shorter? Would developers have less incentive to build at all? I really don't know that impact.
So I agree with you completely, and like you, as a town meeting member, I would vote on a motion to refer if it were presented. I think, I think from this Board's perspective, my recommendation would be to vote no on this particular article. And for all the reasons that we've discussed, our uncertainty about what those implications are, given the level of study that it's had at this point.
Yeah, plus the, I don't think that there's been enough discussion about this out in the world. I mean, it's one thing to bring it to each Board, and I appreciate that, but I think it needs a little bit more public process.
I'm sympathetic to what Mr. Matthews is doing. I think he identified the nugget problem. I think he might be on to something to figure it out. However, it seems like it's an imprecise and blunt instrument to go into town meeting and start parsing out something. So with repercussions that we don't know yet. So I think it, I would welcome it, which we heard.
Yeah.
And like, it is, whatever she heard.
If we found the planning study, honey, they can have some funds to study.
There you go. All right, so here's, I would end the motion.
I already made a motion, and it's already been sent.
I did do an extra comment, right?
Those were the extra comments.
All right, all those that's come to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? You name it.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if the Board wants to take up at this point what the amendments that the petitioner is on the plastic band. I have seen them, but they have sent them to the moderator for a final review. As you know, they are to take out one of the definitions and all these. And the other is to remove the reference to water pumps. And they were, they did go to every room, and they're clear they're doing that. So it is right, but you can do it now, or you could take the decision.
You're right.
And I understand that one of those amendments is to change the fee schedule as well.
Yes, there's, yes, there's a technical amendment that includes the fee schedule, which we already knew about. And you already voted subject to that, but then there's the removal of the.
Clear and solid policy diary, which is known as oriented policy diary.
Right, okay.
Is there interest in revoting?
I'm interested. I would, well, I guess I, I move that the Select Board reconsider Article 44, excuse me, 45.
And as part of that, to adopt.
Thank you, we can do that together. We can do that together. So I rec, move that the Select Board reconsider Article 45 and recommend adoption of the main motion and the proposed motions to amend Article 45.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All right, do you have none? Come to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah. Okay, Article 46, citizen's petition, authorization should spend funds for consultation for MBTA community zoning. Thoughts?
I'm torn. I mean, I think that our consultants did a great job, Katie and the town managers have done a great job. I, the information that I would love to see, which I don't know is able to be gotten. I mean, it might be, you know, it might be something that's not answerable at this point is, at any point, like a longitudinal analysis, at any point, will our infrastructure be insufficient to handle additional growth associated with the MBTA Communities Act and the zoning specifically that's being proposed? I would love to have that. I don't know if we can get that information. If we can, from consultants, then I think using funds not specific to this article necessarily, either reserve fund or planning consulting, just any funds, I think would be worthwhile. The question of, but then, you know, if it's not answerable, it's not worth spending money on. There's a question of, is it redundant relative to the work that we've already done? Even if it is, I mean, with regards to the Linden development, we, you know, the Housing Authority has their own consultant, CPC hired their own consultant, in some cases for really big, important projects. It is good to have multiple sets of eyes on things. So I, I've said before, I don't view this as an appropriation, because there's no source of funding. It's a, it's a desire for some, some funding at some future point. And so I, I am leaning towards supporting this.
Mr. Chair, I don't believe that it's possible to know all the answers until the future. But I think we can, what we can say is that we have studied what is possible to study with the expertise of those who are most intimate and familiar with the systems that we are discussing. And those experts did find a place where we needed more help, and that was the traffic study. We did find a deficit in our examination, and we have made a request to rectify that. I think that the rest of the information is complete and thorough and sufficient. And there is no need for this additional money for exploration. I also would say that despite many conversations and many questions, the Home Committee was unable to understand the scope of the desired consultation. And that says to me that there, there isn't a deep need for additional consultation. So I would, I would make a motion for the Select Board not to recommend vertical.
So I would second that. I guess I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, with respect to the base plan, I'm convinced that there's no changes required for the base plan. Right? I appreciated the detail that was provided by Katie this evening on the higher plan that really came down to if 50% of all the children that became, you know, evident under the bonus plan, the neighborhood plan, were to arrive at the high school in the same year, that then we would be stuck. Okay, I think the likelihood of that again is also quite low, of that being the scenario that that plays out in reality. And I know that that's 2039, I believe, is the year that that's forecasted to be a problem. Which isn't to say that we might not need to do something by 2039. But, but that is not, there's nothing we can study today that's going to be relevant for 2039. I'm quite confident of that. So, so I think for that reason, I feel like this is not adding to our knowledge in a concrete, tangible way that will be useful to discussion of MBTA communities. So that would, that would be my view. I've also been intrigued, because the proponents have reiterated a number of times the need of 2025 study. And I was the principal proponent and shepherd of the 2025 study, which was really a very good 30,000-foot view of the town that we really wanted to understand where our population was, was a huge question at that time. And we came out with more definitive answers there, and we wanted to know, were there some real pain points that we should be aware of? It's not a detailed study, so it keeps getting presented as something that's going to add detail by using those consultants. That's not what they were here for, and that's not the kind of work that they gave. So I would just observe that.
I, Mr. Chair, I say another thing. You brought up the difference between the base and the bonus. I think for people who are on the fence and don't know which one to support in October, I think having additional data to know whether the bonus, excuse me, I shouldn't say bonus, the neighborhood housing plan, whether the neighborhood housing plan support, the infrastructure can support that, could help make people's minds up between the two. So having, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm trying to let you finish, but yes.
So I, I think the question is, the infrastructure has certain capacity limits. We, I mean, I, I think I asked, and a response is not able to be provided right now, because this is something like I want to know, but we, we just don't have the ability to answer it. Every infrastructure has capacity limits. You know, how many, you know, people, or how many cars, or how many schoolchildren, or, you know, how much, you know, cubic feet of water. And when you add more people, it approaches that limit, and in some cases may exceed that limit. And knowing where that limit is specifically, I think is really important. And if we could get that through a third-party study, I think it would be valuable. And it could help answer whether or not either scenario, the base compliance or the neighborhood housing plan, would meet, exceed, or be completely sufficient with the existing infrastructure.
But I think what we heard this evening, right, from, from our Deputy Town Manager, was that looking at the neighborhood plan, that to the best of our informed opinion today, that we are not hitting those limits. Okay, and, and, and one area was called out as being something that we have enough information to know in 2039, if a case that we, is not a likely case, occurred, then we would be in trouble. But the other routine infrastructure areas, with the exception of traffic, which we are going to go take another look at, okay, are things that we believe can be accommodated within the planning processes that the town has already put in place. Okay, that doesn't mean we will have no investments in any of those items over the next 20 years. Clearly, we will, right? But, but it does say that we're not expecting that due to this, that there's something that creates a step function that's of a significant nature. And, and I think, you know, people are very concerned, I understand. But for example, right, we are a town that has still a significant embedded older infrastructure. And even if you look at things as mundane as toilets, right? And we go back to when Chestnut Street was built and what might have been installed there, right? And what it gets replaced by, you can probably replace one toilet with seven, you know? So it's that kind of a thing, or one with five, you know? So because technology's changed, right, and how things work has changed. So it's, it's a very complicated interaction between all of those things. But I appreciate the work that the town departments have done, trying to think about, how do you look at what's there, and how do you look at what might be coming?
I'd like to point out also that the, each project is going to be self-limited. So each project needs to have a construction review that will decide if it's, if the capacity is such that it can be, that it can meet all the standards and requirements, and thus can be built. In addition, MBTA Communities' language itself says that the town is not required to upgrade any infrastructure to accommodate developments. So there is no mandate to make these improvements. Our population increased over the past 10 years without any kind of zoning increases, except for the developments that we discussed previously this evening. We know that this is the trend, that our population is going to increase. But this is why we have done the capital planning for, you know, five years out and more. I think that there is such a thing as analysis paralysis, that we could study things forever and not take any action. But I think that's not the appropriate course.
You know, I've been following this citizen's petition since it landed, and I've noticed that the rationale has changed. It seems like the goal posts a moon rate, and sometimes it feels like it's a solution looking for a problem. The scope has been modified a number of times. They've never been clear on the funding source, even though like the one was like, we've been asked this every meeting, and we still don't have an answer. At the end of the day, they're still looking at the same, with the same eyes, at the same things. The consultant, whoever they are, will act everything that town has already given us to derive a thorough analysis. So I just think, and the other issue is timing. I don't think there's, if they want this before, 30 days before town meeting, I don't think we will be able to get a consultant to do this much work with this much money that would be this much different from what we've had before. So I think, I appreciate the effort, but I don't think this is something you recommend to town meeting. Thoughts?
Can I say one last thing? I think, so I want to take your example. So say, say there's a situation where housing, with the infrastructure was not sufficient for housing development. Housing development, right, could not be built, and the town, well, and the town would not be forced to upgrade the infrastructure. Then we wouldn't have housing, and I think the goal is to have more housing. And I guess, ha- having the information, in my opinion, could only help. I don't think it undermines the work that the town or other consultants have done. So.
It is entirely possible that the study would have captured that a possible eventuality, which we don't know what it would be, or a project that might come along, for a developer who might cobble together some lots. It's, there's so much conjecture that we can't handle these things before they happen. And when they do happen, they'll be managed, right? If something, infrastructure is shy on something, they can't get water pressure, mitigation will have to happen, and they work with the developer, but that will happen at the time. But knowing before that, I, I don't see the, I don't see the rationale.
So my sense is that this Board concurs that we're all trying to figure out how to build more housing, that that's a desirable goal, that, that we view contributing to trying to ease some of the housing shortage in the, in the area as being a public good and one that need and would like to participate in. But I guess my next question, thinking about that, is the town already has, for example, on, you know, water and stormwater, various master plans that are teed up to occur over the next several years. So you're correct, we don't have that information for the fall. We will have it as our regular course of business to plan out our investments for the next five to 10 years. That seems to me like the proper form of planning. And in fact, that planning will be able to be done with a context of where the town has voted on MBTA communities, and that will be context for how that scope of work gets set. That just seems to me to be the right order of business in the first place. If we were to do work now, it is conjecture. And, and I don't view that as a good use of town funds. But we're able to spend money on conjecture. I mean, that's true.
I'm not convinced it's conjecture. If it is conjecture, then I don't want to spend that money, but I'm hoping that it's not.
Okay. All right, I did hear a second.
Yes.
Okay.
You did.
Want to come to vote? All those in favor of, our motion is to not.
Not recommend adoption.
Not recommend adoption.
All right, all those in favor not to recommend adoption, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to not recommending adoption?
Nay.
Thank you, all right, read the one. Next.
We have to, capital improvement funds?
Yes.
We are going to wait until Monday?
Mr. Chair, I would recommend, as much as I wish I didn't have to do this, I would recommend that Article 48, 49, and 50 be withdrawn. It's the merits of funding these stabilization funds. It's, the merits of funding these stabilization funds is worthy. I think with the last-minute nature of these, where there have been no amounts discussed in public to put into these funds, that doing it Monday as you're meeting thirty minutes before town meeting would not be appropriate. And that we would bring these back in the fall for funding, when which there would be an opportunity to have a conversation about the targets with the board and with the finance committee. Also in conversation with the finance committee over the past year and with the board. We do want to repurpose one of the funds, and the wording that's required to do that is not in this warrant. So we would also want to accomplish that in the fall. So I think for those reasons, that it would be more appropriate to take this up in the fall and not rush to judgment, and I would respectfully ask that they be withdrawn.
I could just add, I think that the summer is the time when we tend to take on this kind of special project, working with the finance committee and finance committee chairs about, you know, what those targets are, and we had talked about with the finance committee this year about repurposing the capital facility, capital improvement fund. So that gives us a couple of months to do that.
Okay. And one more, I'm making a motion.
Oh, I had a question. Do you anticipate that whatever free cash is certified, assuming all of the articles in the warrant are passed, that there will be any free cash remaining?
There may be, I anticipate there'll be some that will still be available and will close out at the end of the year, just as last year. There was a couple million dollars that closed out, and it rolls over and becomes certified for the following year. Hopefully, I will not promise that it'll be ready by October, but I anticipate the process of getting it certified for the next annual town meeting will, it will happen for the next annual town meeting. There may be other funding sources, but the importance is having clarity on updating the targets. Secondly, the, how there would be draws against the funds, what would be the circumstances. And third, updating the language. Those are certainly actions. The latter two are actions that are policy-directed with the select board, working with the finance committee, and of course, the name and purpose of the fund that's a town meeting.
The late certification is the only thing I'm concerned about. When, you know, when we, when free cash is certified so late, we can't use it. So rolling over free cash the next year is of limited utility.
But we don't have the choice other than trying to explain decisions being made thirty minutes before town meeting.
We agree that late free cash is unacceptable. Problem that we're working to fix.
And as I keep saying, part of what set us up here was a decision, right, to take four million dollars in free cash and allocate it toward a college study for, in compliance with MSBA, to move that process forward. So that's a big slug that normally would have gone to other places, and, you know, we're in a different year. So that will not be the case next year, that we'll need to be doing that again.
But in the conversations with the finance committee over the summer, maybe there could be a discussion about how much free cash should roll over to the next year. I mean, I've kind of had the thought that it should be limited. Like, if we can put as much of it into reserve funds as possible, I feel like that would be a good policy.
Certainly, that's one of the discussion points in there with the finance committee as well as the select board. But in the end, it's always town meeting that makes the decisions.
So I actually would make a motion to withdraw articles forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty.
Discussion? All right, here we go. Come to vote. All those in favor, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Yeah, we're done with. Okay. You may not realize it, Katie. Can we just jump ahead and contend at seven o'clock?
Yes.
Head in, contend. Thank you for your face. I'll be in the team. The outdoor. But you will also be, is required for. How many seats? Twenty-four. Excellent. All right. Do my colleagues say aye? Oh, I need to add, this is a public hearing. Yes, is anyone in the room who wishes to speak? Is anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak? Any of my colleagues?
I just note that this is actually not like the past years when we've had application for outdoor dining. This is in fact a request to regularize the outdoor dining and just have a plan that's certified going forward. So this becomes something because the citizens of Needham have come to delight in summer dining, and we all look forward to that season. And I hope you will have lots of people on your back.
We pray that we should have great days also, sunny days.
That's what we all hope for. So I don't have any questions related to this application.
Any more? Okay. I would welcome a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that the select board vote to approve the alteration of premises amendment application for Psy Restaurants Incorporated doing business as Masala Art. And vote for the amendment application to the ADCC.
Oh, you're ahead of us.
Here on the next one.
Apologies.
Mr. Chair, I would move that the board vote to approve an outdoor dining license for Psy Restaurant Eat Doing Business as Masala Art, and to grant an exception to select board policy SB LIC zero-one-six to permit additional parking spaces to be used for outdoor dining.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Anyone in the room? Zoom, good. All right, come to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You may.
I think I gave away the ending.
I know, right?
So this is a two-part transaction, yeah.
Stay there. So this is the second part. We're gonna, this is the alteration of premises from all alcohol license in a restaurant to your restaurant. So this is the same as happened before, as with the summers. So do we have any discussion? This is a public hearing. Anyone in the room who should speak? Anyone on Zoom? Any of my colleagues who should speak?
I'm in favor of permitting the alteration of premises so that alcoholic beverages may be served outside.
Great. Heidi, do you wish to make a motion similar to one you've been before?
Certainly. Mr. Chair, I'll move that the select board vote to approve the alteration of premises amendment application for Psy Restaurant Incorporated doing business as Masala Art. And vote this time to forward the amendment application to the ADCC for review and final approval.
It's better than a second here. Second?
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? Anyone in the room, anyone on Zoom? Here we go. We come to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry for the hour.
To sunny days.
I know.
And warm nights.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, Kate, I'm sorry, we will back to you.
I'm giving the hour, I'm all set.
Okay. Do we have more discussions? Anything, Kimmy, assignments, anything with like home?
Well, home has met several times since our last meeting, three as a matter of fact. But I think we've spent plenty of time on home tonight, so nothing further to add.
Yeah? Not many more nuanced discussions. Branding and Seal, and Town Seal Committee has met. We're again, making headway on a town grand. It's actually not fun, but meetings are very interesting. A lot of people have great ideas, so it's coming along. The other thing I want to say is, I want to give a shout out to the DFW, Tom Keating, Bill Topham. They came up to Arlington for a ceremony for the five Needham residents who died out of Lexington Concord and Allen. And it was actually really nice. Surprise, it rained. It has always rained.
Shocker.
So next year, this event will be Build as a Rain event, and it's sunny. But actually, it was a great experience, and so it worked perfectly, and it didn't really rain that hard. And that's all I have. Any committees?
No, I had no committees. That's how I had time to watch all the home meetings.
Good. All right, well, we can just sit here all night.
Well, we could have a motion to adjourn. I would be adjourned.
I don't see the rush. All right, do we have any second?
Yes.
Discussion?
None.
I didn't, well, wait. All right, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?